The April 26, 2022 Meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We have our board motto by Board Member King.
Yes, we are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Ms. King. For the courtesies of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove their hats and to turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Present.
Mrs. Nancy Throhren, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Joanne Crowder, Fine Arts Program Spenders, please come forward and introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge.
Good evening, Board Chairperson Reverend Cummings, Vice Chair Mrs. Campbell, Board Members Mrs. King, Mrs. Throhren, and Mr. Browning, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, Mrs. Martinez Lopez, and all of our guests. I'm here to speak to you about the City of Ocala's REACH Poster Contest. Student Artists K-12 were invited to submit original designs for the City of Ocala's Racial Equity and Harmony Task Force 2021-2022 Poster Contest. The theme this year was restoration, and the artwork had to respond to the following questions. How do we make Ocala feel like home for everyone? How does Ocala feel like home to you? It is my honor this evening to introduce John Spencer, the Recreation Division Head of the City of Ocala's Recreation and Parks Department, to introduce the winning student artist and his art teacher. Mr. Spencer.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is John Spencer with the City of Ocala with Recreation and Parks. I'm the liaison for the REACH Poster Contest, and I am proud to announce this year's winner. This year's winner had a wonderful poster that should be available in your packet for your review. As mentioned, this is talking about home and what makes Ocala home. His poster, which we framed for him, represents many of the things in our community that encompass home to him, and I'd like to present to you our winner this year, Davy Peably. He is an A Street Elementary student in Ms. Anderson's 4th grade class. His art teacher joining us this morning is Jeannie Baines, and we had support from the principal, Mr. Bennett, the principal at A Street. His poster contest, I just want to highlight a couple of things. It talked about community, playgrounds, some historical things like Fort King, art at the museum, and just various things he loved, and we here at the city and at the REACH community thought it was just a very encompassing poster that showed everything in our community that makes it a special place, and we just wanted to present him to you and honor him at your meeting and just honor him for within the school district and the teachers and the principal who support this project. So, his poster contest, Davy, he's our winner for this year.
Congratulations.
And if you happen to have any questions or comments, welcome to address those. If not, we can...
Sure.
Ms. Throhren.
Thank you. I'm so proud of that great work that you did, and I could tell you're proud of it too because you're standing there nice and tall and showing it to us, and I bet it was fun to work on. So, congratulations.
The artistic creativity and ability that you have is truly exceptional. You should be very proud, and I know that your teacher is as well. And we at the school district are very proud also of our partnership with the City of Ocala in lots of different ways, and I'll be talking about that a little bit later in my board comments. But I was last night on the downtown square enjoying the jazz concerts, thanks to the City Parks and Rec Department, too. So, I appreciate our partnership in lots of things artistic-related and arts-related, but certainly you, young man, have done amazing work and should be very, very proud of your work.
Good, Ms. Browning.
Thank you.
Ms. Browning.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. I would like to make sure, absolutely sure, that that goes up to the Department of State. You will gain assistance by this board, this board member for sure, and to the Department of Arts and Culture. Sandy Shaughnessy is the director there, and you tell them you know Senator Baxley, you know Senator Perry, you know Representative McLean, and if you don't, we'll get you introduced. You can talk to them by phone. Congratulations, this is a home run. This is start of a, you don't have the mustache, but Salvador Dali, you know, we're talking big dollars here.
Thank you, sir. And we will work with his teachers and Ms. Joanne Crowder to maybe follow up and see if we can get some statewide recognition as well. Thank you.
Congratulations, Davy. Thank you for being able to look at Ocala, Marion County, and see the best in it and to try to put it on canvas. So, we really appreciate the vision that you have for this city and this county because what you see is what the future will be because you are our future. So, we thank you for what you're doing right now, and I know his parents are here, A Street. Where's all the folks from A Street? I saw Mr. Bennett here. All the people from A Street stand up and support this young man with him because you guys helped nurture him and make him who he is. Parents. So, again, congratulations, Davy, and job well done. Keep doing what you're doing. Keep having the right vision for Ocala, Marion County. Thank you. Ms. Crowder.
Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Davy. Y'all give this young man another big hand as his assistant.
Bikes are working.
That is tremendous. That's inspirational.
Thank you. Ms. Jennifer Beck, Director of Elementary Education, please come forward and introduce the individuals for After-School Professionals Week.
All right. Good evening, Reverend Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. It is my privilege this evening to come to talk to you a little bit about After-School's Professionals Appreciation Week. This week is a time to recognize, appreciate, and advocate for those individuals that work with our young people during after-school hours. The after-school professional is someone who works with children and youth from diverse schools and communities-based settings and provide a wide variety of extended learning opportunities during those after-school hours. An estimated 10.2 million children nationwide participate in after-school programs each year. Today, after-school programs are viewed as more than just childcare. In fact, they offer programs in STEM, literacy, arts, social-emotional learning, health and wellness, and even more. With the demands that come and the increased responsibility and education and professional development requirements, these individuals are certainly valued both across our nation and certainly in our district. In fact, in our district, Marion After-School's Programs serves an average of over 3,000 students daily. There are over 150 after-school professionals that contribute to the success of these programs. This evening, I'd like to introduce our Coordinator of Marion After-School's Programs, Mrs. Pam Eubanks, and she's brought just a few of our wonderful, dedicated individuals that work with our students after school and before school each day. Ms. Eubanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Beck. Good evening, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to come and recognize After-School Professionals Week. Tonight, I have the honor to introduce four ladies that have over 30 years of service with us. I have Carla Brown. Carla is our Site Manager at Greenway Elementary. She has served at College Park, Ocala Springs, 8th Street, and Osceola. And in the early days, she was a traveling site manager, so she's had an impact on all after-school programs at the elementary level in our district. Margaret White, 32 years. She is our Site Manager at Fort McCoy. She began at East Marion and has been at Fort McCoy for 20 years. Rosanna Godwin, 32 years. Rosanna is our Site Manager at Oak Crest, and she has served at Anthony, Dr. N.H. Jones, and has been at Oak Crest for 15 years. And then we have Ann Simmons, 32 years. Ann is our Area Manager on our Admin Team. We call her our coach, and I don't think we would have survived this year without her with the staffing issues that we've had, but Ann is a terrific coach, and she began her career at Evergreen, and she was at that site for 21 years. And she transferred to Saddlewood where she spent another seven years before she joined us in our Admin Office. So, thank you, ladies, for the impact that you make daily on our children, and we appreciate your service. Thank you, Board.
You all walked away too quickly, but that's okay. We can talk about you even though you're going to go, "Go ahead, be seated." That's fine. But this board knows how much of an advocate I am for after-school programs. My children have always taken advantage of them, and I know the hard work that you all put in. It is extended learning. It's not just daycare or childcare after hours. It's extended learning opportunities for those children. And even sometimes whenever that's extended learning out on the playground, it's also still extended learning because they're learning character skills, they're learning teamwork, they're learning how to behave themselves, and sometimes that's just as important, those character-building skills that they're learning, in addition to all the other academic and wonderful extracurricular activities that you all provide. Thank you so much for your dedication. Thank you so much for the longevity that you've put into this very, very important job in the district. 30-plus years for all of you is amazing. I really hope that the board starts considering how we recognize the longevity of our employees because without this opportunity tonight, we wouldn't have had the opportunity to recognize you the way we have. So, thank you so much for your diligence, your dedication, your perseverance, because I know that's part of it, too, and we just appreciate all that you guys do because, again, it is extended learning whenever you're in Marion After-School Programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think anyone sitting here could say it any better or eloquently. Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell, for those wonderful comments, and seeing you guys in action through the years, you know, you're champions for kids, you make the magic happen, especially and including our kids with significant special needs that aren't always the easiest to serve and take care of, especially at the end of a long day. So, thank you so much for what you do, and 30 years dedicated to something means a lot. Thank you.
Yes, a double magnified ditto to Vice Chair Campbell's comments. Very appropriate.
Listen, thank you, thank you so much. I'm just glad you weren't, we weren't celebrating you retiring, that you're still got the shirt on. That means you still, you still got more years to come, so thank y'all so much for what you're doing, that you have done for the past 30-plus years and what you continue to do in the years ahead. So, thank you all so much. Y'all deserve another hand. Thank you. Ms. Megan Magamal, Executive Director, Public Education Foundation of Marion County, please come forward and introduce the individuals being recognized as business partners on this evening.
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, School Board Members Browning, Throhren, Ms. King, Attorney Powers, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. Megan Magamal with the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, and I am extremely proud and honored to stand here tonight to be recognizing our amazing business and civic organizations that partner with our foundation to support Marion County Public Schools as official school/business partners. We are proud to have many of those partners here in the room with us, along with representatives from the local CEP. This has been a record-breaking year for support for our schools through business partnerships. We have 82 total partnerships contributing over $200,000 in a collective investment to support Marion County Public Schools, and this is historic because it is the first year that every school in our district has at least one business partners, if not more. And we know that the financial... And we know that the financial contribution is just a part of what that support looks like because these business partners are showing up in our schools to support student learning, to find out what the needs of the school and the teachers and the staff are and to jump in and help. They are the ones providing career-shadowing opportunities. They are coming in and volunteering their time and their talents on top of their treasure as financial supporters. So, tonight is a celebration of these partnerships. I will be naming each partnership. Yes, that is all 82 that will be named. Quickly, I promise. But those who are standing here with us this evening, I am going to ask that when they are named, that they do stand for recognition along with their school leadership team representatives who have joined them to show their support. We will start with Advent Health Ocala, Fay Peraza, and their business partner schools are Bellevue High School and Vanguard High School. Allstate Construction, Denise Corbin is here representing Fezziden Elementary's partnership. American Dream Residential and East Marion Elementary. Ausley Construction, Kenneth Ausley is here for their partnership with Legacy Elementary and Stanton Weersdale Elementary. Bradley Blessing State Farm Agency and Bellevue High School. Chick-fil-A at Paddock Mall, Debbie Machel is here and her partner school Shady Hill Elementary. Colin Barrett from Edward Jones and Saddlewood Elementary. The College of Central Florida and College Park Elementary. Collier-Jernigan Eastman Zublick and Denellen High School. Conrad Tree Service, Lori Conrad and William are here, their partnership school Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks. Cox Communications and Howard Middle School, Oak Crest Elementary. Doctors Urgent Care, we have Neil Patel and their schools, Dr. N.H. Jones and Osceola Middle. Dr. Jones Orthodontics, Bellevue Middle School and Madison Street. E1 and Saddlewood Elementary. Express Care of Bellevue and Bellevue Santos Elementary. Fecory Leadership International and Emerald Shores Elementary. Fecory Medical and Chiropractic and Wyamina Park Elementary. Florida Express Environmental and North Marion High. FMC Wealth Management and Denellen Middle School. Glover Law Firm, Gordon Glover, and 8th Street Elementary. Gordon Glover is also the foundation's board president. Golden Ocala Golf and Equestrian Club, Anthony Elementary and Reddick Collier Elementary. HCA Florida Ocala Hospital, Caitlin Butler is here representing their Westport High Partnership. Inline Orthodontics, Hammett Bowen Elementary and Liberty Middle School. Standridge Construction, Brian Kilgore and Harborview Elementary is their partner school. Jenkins Auto Group, Marion Technical College. Lockheed Martin, Jeff Chang is here with Lake Weir High School. Jennifer Darley, PA and Howard Middle School. Love Incorporated in the Heart of Florida, Bellevue High School and Lake Weir Middle. McDonald's of the Shores, Greenway Elementary. Mackenzie's Moment and the Smith Family Foundation, Bellevue Elementary, East Marion Elementary, Fort McCoy School, Maplewood Elementary, Oak Crest, and Ocala Springs Elementary. Meadowbrook Church, College Park Elementary, Neighborhood Storage, South Ocala Elementary. Ocala Electric Utility, Ocala Springs Elementary. Ocala Fiber Network, we have Mel Poole representing. Mel is also a foundation board member, and he is partnering with Dr. N.H. Jones, Denellen Elementary, Lake Weir Middle, Marion Oaks, North Marion Middle, and Sunrise Elementary. Ocala Marion County Association of Realtors, Darlene Yance and Sue Shields, representing Hillcrest School Partnership. On Top of the World, 100 Grandparents Club, Romeo Elementary's partner. Pediatric Associates of Ocala, Fort King Middle School. Phoenix Wood Products, Fort McCoy School. Rainies Incorporated, Madison Street, and Vanguard High. Ray Mears, a new partner this year, has Forest High School, Fort King Middle School, Lake Weir High School, and Lake Weir Middle. Reed Orthodontics, Osceola Middle School. Regions Bank, Madison Street. Riley Art Center, Director Pamela Salera Wardell, and Madison Street Academy. Robert Boisinal Oncology Institute and Forest High. Signature Brands, Michelle Colbert representing Marion Technical Institute and Shady Hill Elementary. Seva MD and Vanguard High School. Spar Building and Spar Elementary. Stillwell Lee's Chicken and Westport High and Ward Highlands Elementary. Stone Petroleum and Greenway Elementary. And the Guest House of Ocala, Lake Weir High School, Spar Elementary, and Westport High School. Thank you to these amazing business partners for their investment in students, teachers, and schools. Thank you. Now, the work of establishing these partnerships could not be done alone, and so we have a lot of gratitude to share with our local CEP. And thankfully, we have Kevin Shealy, President and CEO, here with us, and Beth McCall, Director of Talent Development. And so, on behalf of the foundation, I want to say thank you to the CEP for investing in fostering these relationships to make this support of local public education possible. Thank you, CEP.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, School Board Members, Superintendent. Thank you for allowing us to partner. I feel like I say this every time we're together. Usually, I feel like you're a lot closer to me, but we are successful when we partner together. Great things happen when we work together. And being able to have 82 businesses partnering with our schools to ensure that we're engaging businesses directly with our educators and with our students, to me, is one of the most phenomenal things we can do as a community. I can remember at the beginning of the year, Megan came and said, "Do you think we can get a partner for every school?" We've been talking about it, and we have said, "This is the year. We're going to make it happen." And so, again, by partnering together, every school has a partner. Now, what I love about Megan is she's already said, "Do you think we can get every school two partners?" So, we're going to see. We're going to keep working, but thank you for allowing us to continue to partner together and to engage with the business community, with the schools. Thank you for what you all do every day.
And last, but surely not least, a final note of thanks to our district leadership, to our school board members, to our Superintendent of Schools, and to our district teams for understanding the importance of engaging our business partners so that every student can succeed. Thank you all.
Come back, come back, come back.
May I bring all of them with me when you say that? Come back, Reverend Cummings.
You sure can.
Please do.
Listen, listen, I want to thank the CEP and all of these, these businesses that have taken the challenge to make sure that these schools are covered and have business partners. We say that it takes a village to raise a kid. Well, you are a part of the village. You are making the village come together, and because of your generosity, these kids, these schools have some things that they may not have gotten. So, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Shealy, Ms. McCall, for the hard work that you guys are going and doing, putting in. Megan, I was thinking the same thing, that we need every school to have at least, at least two. So, Kevin, Ms. McCall, we're giving you your marching orders right now, so, but we're looking forward to you. Thank you, thank you so much. It's, you can, we can't say that mu, we can't say thank you enough for all that you guys are doing for our schools and our kids. Thank you.
Absolutely. Oh, are we all going to say something? Yeah, I would just like to say again, thank you, as Chair Cummings was saying. I have the unique position of I was a Public Education Foundation Board Member back before I was ever up here long ago, and also served as a business partner whenever I was working in the corporate world. I know what that relationship looks like and how it can be incredibly successful. I know Ms. Beck was the principal whenever I worked with that, so she knows that, too. But thank you not only just for those dollars, but also for the time and the talents that you're putting in, participating in SAC meetings. I mean, you guys are volunteering to judge science fairs. I know that you're doing lots of different activities and lots of opportunities that are really joining that business community to our schools. So, thank you again so much for all the hard work that you all have put in, and if you have some space to do another one, I think there's a challenge out there, so we'd love to have you even step up to do one more school if you haven't already. So, thank you again. We appreciate you.
I just also want to say thank you before you guys run off because I'm sitting up here. I am just so appreciative that we have a business community that cares and advocates for our students, and you guys are excellent examples. And Ms. McCall is, I know most of us know, is a former school board member, and she worked on this, and if, but to see you on the business side and still advocating for our students is just wonderful. And Mr. Shealy, I've worked with you on boards, too, like with Kids Central and stuff, and this is just wonderful. So, thank you so much.
It's what community is all about, right here. That's all I've got.
Yes, thank you. Megan, absolutely beautiful presentation. You did those folks proud, and I like the way they were all enunciated and all brought forward like that. That's tremendous. Beth, you can come up here and sit anytime you want to. I've been filling in the chair, but probably not nearly as well as you did. And I'd just like to say that all funds that go forward need to be targeted, and we talked about it just briefly coming in tonight, need to be targeted toward our goal of education and that top 10% in the state of Florida. So, I'm heartened by the excitement and those names that I heard out there are names we see every day, and we do business with these people on a private level, and it's very exciting. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you guys so much. And Megan, you did a good job. You got through all 82 in five minutes. Thank you. Superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, members of the board. We have a lot to be grateful for in our community. I recommend approval of the agenda for the April 26, 2022 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the items D 24.1, D 24.2, and D 24.3 that have been placed under discussion, and items C 7.1, C 7.2, C 8.1, C 9.1, C 10.1, C 11.1, C 16.1, C 19.1, C 19.2, and C 23.2 that have been pulled for discussion.
Thank you, Superintendent. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Moved.
Moved by Board Member Throhren.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 22, 2022 School Board Meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Board Member Throhren. Are there any additions or corrections to the minute? Any discussion there being done? All in favor, signify by aye.
There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Asked unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion, second.
Moved by Ms. Thora, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes? There being no discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion.
Moved by Ms. Campbell. Seconded by Ms. Thora. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Asked unanimously. All now, as the School Board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section two-eight-six-point-zero-one-one-four of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on School Board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the School Board's clerk no later than five forty P.M. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order of receipt by the School Board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When a speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided twenty-four hours in advance. The Board's here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the Board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Powers, Ms. Martinez Lopez. How many speakers do we have?
We have five. Mr. Lenny Costa.
Can everybody hear us well in the back, in the back of the building?
No.
Cannot hear us?
No, not very well.
My name is Lenny Costa Senior.
Hold on, sir.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear half the stuff that the gentleman was saying.
Can you speak directly into the mic? Pull the mic down a little bit and speak directly into it.
There you go. First of all, I want to say I'm sorry. I do stutter. I'm a disabled veteran. I have PTSD and TBI. I served in Iraq. The reason I'm here today is I'm a concerned-
Hold on, we'll start, we'll start the clock over. We didn't get your name, address, all that stuff.
I'm sorry. My name, I said, was Lenny Costa Senior, sir.
Go ahead.
All right. Like I said, I'm a disabled veteran. I apologize for stuttering. I do have PTSD and TBI. I was injured in Iraq. I'm a concerned parent. Something happened to my son the first day he came, he went to school. He was injured. Came home with, well, he got in my truck, I should say, and had a bloody mask. I'm not going to use any names, I'm just going to state what happened. The teacher didn't know anything about it. I was very concerned that my son came home the very first day with a bloody face and behind a mask, this is during COVID times, unfortunately. Called up, spoke to the principal, and that individual principal did the investigation. Well, I kind of put my two cents in, sorry the way I say things, and it kind of went the way of how I said it, which a full thing was not done. A full investigation wasn't done. My next point is, he got locked in the bathroom for over, I'll say, three minutes, was told to me by the staff, by the teacher, and by the principal. Took him three minutes that he was stuck in that bathroom by himself. Okay? And then, another thing was said to, well, another thing happened that he would get hit by other kids. And was brought to my attention that certain individual kids in the classroom was unruly, we'll say. Not raised, I don't know, I can't say that, just was not right. And then, the teacher had the audacity to tell me that that's how kids are. I'm sorry, I didn't teach my four-year-old, five-year-old son to go punch another kid in the face, trip him, or trip any other kids, or hurt any other kids. So, safety. And then, the last and final thing that brought me here today was that he was told by his teacher not to tell mom or dad anything bad that happened to him in his class. Kind of upset me. So, that day, I went to the principal. The principal didn't care. The principal was more worried about your guys' tests that you guys have a year, every year, and nothing really happened, came about. Then, my son and my family was moved to a different school. That's all I can say right now, without getting emotional, getting upset. Like I said, I do have PTSD and TBI, and I'm sorry. But I like things to be resolved the right way. And I was trying to get in touch with one of your staff members that is on stage, and it's an act of God to get to that individual. So, that's all I have to say right now, without getting upset or emotional.
Mr. Costa, don't tell me the name of the school, just tell me if it's an elementary school, middle school, or high school.
It's an elementary school.
Okay. Our area Superintendent for Elementary School will catch you before you get out the building, and they will address those issues with you. So, as you're walking back, they'll be meeting you somewhere in the hallway, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Elena?
Ms. Kirsten Angel. Good evening. My name is Kirsten Angel, and I live at two-zero-five-five Southeast Fiftieth Terrace in Ocala, Florida. And what I wish to address the Board on this evening is something to do with general, I guess, school policy. My mother, Marsha Orth Angel, was a dean at Lake Weir Middle School, and I can actually say for once and for all that I am glad that today she is in heaven. The reason I say that is severalfold. First of all, if she were alive today, one thing that she would be definitely concerned about would be this social and emotional learning. This information is ridiculous. If our schools were doing what they were supposed to do, and they were teaching people how to read, write, do social studies, do, do things that were there supposed to be educated on, this social and emotional learning would have no place and no practice in the Marion County school system. If we were doing these things that we were supposed to be doing, there would be no reason for any of these things to be in place. This special program that is going on apparently at the fifth grade through the eighth grade, that apparently some of the principals in our school system are sending letters home to parents on, I find intolerable. Again, there's no reason, while this information needs to be going on in our school system unless you were doing perfection on all the things you were supposed to be doing, and I have news for you folks, you're not doing it. These things need to be ceased and ended. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Angel.
Ms. Taylor Smith?
Hi, good evening. My name is Taylor Smith. Address is forty-three-hundred Northwest One Hundred Street, zip code three-four-four-eight-two. I came to speak tonight to include you in on an issue I feel needs to be reevaluated. During campaign seasons, we always hear candidates state, "We need to keep our graduates in Marion County." I am here tonight to give you an example of how we just lost a very competent, enthusiastic graduate of Westport High and University of Florida, who just so happens to be my sister. She graduates this Sunday with her bachelor's degree in animal science. She recently contacted Marion County Public Schools Certification Specialist Department. After an email exchange with several attachments, my sister also contacted Osceola County Public Schools. In my sister's words, "Osceola County rolled out the red carpet." In less than eight hours, teachers and a superintendent had contacted her. In the next several days, she had spoken with several staff members, the superintendent and the principal of Osceola Schools. Osceola has an entire pathway for new college graduates to obtain their education certification, which is basically a program through Osceola. The course plan offered is three hundred and a deductible about twenty dollars per paycheck to make it less of a hardship on new employees and new teacher. The coursework can be done after work hours. On the other hand, in Marion County, she thought she would need to attend college to get the required coursework and unsure if she could work as a teacher and not a substitute. So, as you can see, Osceola has a pathway that any new college graduate will jump on. My sister wanted to stay in Marion County because she received the Milling Foundation Scholarship, which upon graduation, if she returned to work in Marion County, the loan repayment plan is at zero percent interest. So, I'm simply suggesting, as it's graduation season, School Board and/or designees look into our transition process. Thank you for your time, and I hope we can work on these issues, and if not an issue, just misinformation, then we find a way to deliver that information more readily. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Mr. Gary White?
If I could, Chair, members of the Board, I spoke with Ms. Smith briefly just before the meeting. I'm going to follow up with that candidate tomorrow morning. Thank you.
I'm Gary White, ninety-two-eighty Southwest Ninety-Sixth Street, Ocala, Florida, three-four-four-eight-one. I represent the Tea Party, it's your Florida Tea Party. We want the schools to do better and are fully sure that the teachers are teaching and to be fully sure that our teaching are not indoctrinating. We have to start listening in the classroom to the teachers to be sure that they are teaching history, reading, writing, and arithmetic, and keep them away from indoctrination. This is happening nationally. We can stop that now here in Ocala. We are sixtieth of sixty-nine in our school rating. Reading and writing and arithmetic would bring us up so quickly and so easily. We have got to get the teachers who do it behind your back or right in front of you or however, to stop the indoctrination and the social welfare idea. It has to be brought to an end. Reading, writing, and arithmetic. Parents, if you'll come to these meetings and state you want your child taught with better programs and so that reaches your child, come to these meetings and talk to these people. They want to do you a good job. They said they would when we elected them, and I know that's in their heart. We come to this and we look at an agenda that is absolutely full of yays and nays. All money, almost to the letter. Spend this much, spend that much. And when I first started talking here, I talked a great deal about examination, examining each one of those money expenditures so that you could reduce them by ten or twelve. At least we had some idea that those money expenditures were being examined and that we were getting the biggest bang for the buck. Rarely ever happens. Hello, is all for it. Call for the question, vote yea or nay, and that's it. We do not ever see anybody in this room that says, "That's my child, that's his chair, that's his classroom. What can we do to bring him from sixtieth in all the school boards to third, or fourth, or fifth? We're losing our kids. We have got to touch the kid in the room." Last but not least, and this is difficult for me to bring up, but I want to make it known, four ladies proposed numbers that painted a very ethnic picture of our schools. These are schools, kids are kids. They didn't say whether they were getting into trouble with other kids of color, or other kids white or black, or whatever. These kids don't want to be racist. They don't want our racist, old-age racist input. We don't want to be racist. We want all kids taught the same. Please don't let our school get to fall into this hole and keep the racist attitude out. We can handle this with good, godly attitudes towards our kids and teaching them reading, writing, and arithmetic, and that'll go a long way to eliminate all racism. Thank you.
A sentence. I just think there are five. It's on the floor. Okay. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda on Items C seven point one through C twenty-three point two, with the exception of Items D twenty-four point one, D twenty-four point two, D twenty-four point three that have been placed on discussions, and Items C seven point one, C seven point two, C eight point one, C nine point one, C ten point one, C eleven point one, C sixteen point one, C nineteen point one, C nineteen point two, and C twenty-three point two that have been pulled for discussion. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thora. All in favor, signify by aye.
Do we have discussion? Is this, is this item six point one?
Not a consent, not a consent. There's no discussion of consent.
What is the number?
I'm sorry?
What is the number of the item?
This is not a particular item, this is consent agenda.
Okay, I'm just asking, is it, is it Item six point one?
This is the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, thank you.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polls have the same sign. Asked unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan Homeless Children and Youth, ARP-HCY Project? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve collective bargaining agreement between the Marion Essential Support Personnel and the School Board of Marion County, twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Ms. King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Polls have the same sign. Asked unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the grant application, elementary and secondary school emergency relief S R two fund under the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, literacy, reading, tutoring for K three? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Asked unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment to Agreement with Neola and Corp. Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thora. Mr. Brown, I understand you pulled Item C seven point one, you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The point of order, I had six point one also pulled, is that still?
Six point one is just a list of the consent agenda items, it's not a discussion.
Six point one is just a list of the consent agenda items, it's not a discussion item. So it's not something to be pulled. Every item that is under the consent agenda can be pulled, but six point one is an identifying block, that's all.
Okay, so it cannot be discussed?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do that in comments, I guess. Okay, all right.
You can discuss consent agendas, and as you have in the past, you can discuss that during the board comment time, but that's not the...
Thank you. Yes, seven point one, yes, the Neola program. It's in the consent agenda. However, I believe this should be on the regular agenda and discussed. And the reason is that our entire operation functions under policy. And our policy, it's such a big deal, it's literally, I don't know if you all can see me this far away, but it's literally that thick. It's big, and it's almost humanly impossible to keep up with. We have been working on it, but our people, our staff has been working on updating it for, I'm going to say years, but I'll let some others that are better able to comment on it say the exact amount of time or approximate. I believe that the way it's set up and through this Neola organization, I believe we are saving more money than we're spending. Now, it's a rather large amount, it's eighty-two thousand dollars, but I believe we're saving more than we're spending. I would like our attorney to speak to it, if you would. The, uh, the complexity of this is beyond belief. I see the Constitution being this thick, and I see our policy being this thick, so... But it's all there, and it's very small type. So if I could, Chair, if I could have Attorney Powers address his background in terms of what we've been doing as a district in reference to this. It's the backbone of what we're doing.
Absolutely, sir. Neola is a company which we contract with to assist us with our board policy review and ensuring that we are up to date on federal and state laws as well as administrative code. Being in really almost any governmental organization, but particularly within the field of education, we are probably one of the most highly regulated areas that exists. Nearly every law from any, regardless of who the governor is or the legislature is at the time, comes in with a mandate to, that school boards will implement the following within their policy, which means that we have to then either create a policy on it or modify an existing policy on it. And if we don't, then we, of course, are subject or in violation status, and we could be subject to fines and all kinds of other problems. And also, we're not exercising the best practices as recognized by the state of Florida. So we have, on a regular basis, we can't simply say that as a school district, we just could, for example, throw out our list of policies and start really basic and have something extremely simple. You know, you brought up the Constitution for example. And you know, of course, the Constitution is a touchstone document. It's got the core, uh, the core concepts right there, just like Florida law. However, then there are a great, great number of constitutional amendments, constitutional case law, all those things that then, if you just looked at the case law alone, you could fill a room with modifications to what that means and interpretations of what those mean. Similarly, when you're dealing with, uh, with policy, nearly every policy that is listed within those six-inch binders that we got for our policy review is something that is required under state law or under federal law. Those things would be things that are required of any employer, for example. They would be required anti-discrimination, non-harassment policies, all the way down to, um, policies specific to, well, there's one that just, we were just discussing recently, regarding textbook approval and things of that nature. So there are policies that impact nearly every single thing that we do. Now, that, of course, means that we have a lot of potential to run afoul of those unless we have someone who is watching what's happening with all of those policies. Neola collects and collates all of that information. They have a database which has all of the federal and state statutes that apply. They amend them regularly, they update them regularly. And about five years ago, we began the process of contracting with Neola, a little over four years ago. And the previous administration, under the previous superintendent, had begun down the path of dealing with that and having the policies updated. Our old policies keep in contact with, I mean, they're effective. However, they were sorely in need of updating in order to assure that we were compliant. Over that period of time, and since new board members have come on and a new superintendent, new legal team, in fact, we've had to update and adjust what we wish to edit, because Neola does allow us to edit those policies to our specific needs. So the policy may have some very specific requirement that we have to meet, but we, as a district, may decide that we wish to amend or in some way alter or further explain our particular take on that policy and what will be done within our district. Not even to mention the procedures that come forth as a result of that. Now, keeping track of all this, I will be honest, if my legal department were tasked with doing that, you'd have to hire two more of me just to make it happen. I mean, there's so much there. And it's all things that we have to do as a district. And the Neola contract, over a period of time, they've actually discounted some rates for us, recognizing the fact that we had a long way to come. We were, we were starting with our policies, and they were not standardized necessarily to meet certain federal and state guidelines. So we had to pull them together. The amendment to the Neola contract here is one in which we do get significant value because it would be one that allows us to retain their agreement for another five years, where we would get periodic updates. And those updates won't be nearly as painful as taking so long because then, once we have our core policies, which are expected to go to rulemaking and development here so that the board can vote on the policies that we've discussed so much in June. So it'll be essentially a finalized process, but a process that is always updated.
The short answer is, we get a lot of value.
Yes.
A bundle from the legal department.
Yes, absolutely.
And I just got, I made a note, attorney has, time has expired. So let me just say that I appreciate that answer.
Yes, sir.
And the meter doesn't go down, folks, on our attorney, based on the amount of time he spends with the answer. But it's just, we have a great value here, and this book doesn't belong to us, it belongs to the people. And you can, you can get into it, you can get into it at any level, it's power, it's the policy. And so use it exactly the way you see fit, and it's for the good of this organization. I just felt that it should not be in a, in a bulk approval. This is a very important thing, and the more we can get it out there so people even know that it exists and that it's there and it's a tool for you. So that concludes mine, unless I did interrupt you a little bit humorfully.
Oh, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I was thorough.
That's what I was looking for, is that it's authentically of value, and you can get hit from the outside with suits, and it's almost astronomical what you could spend, even under the similar limitations that are allowed. It's a big deal, and I feel a whole lot more secure with some people looking at it outside, and then we look at it on the inside, and it belongs to the people out there.
I will add, Mr. Browning, that based on our total contract with Neola, over a period of ten years, we would easily expect to pay that same amount within one year for a dedicated attorney to do nothing but adjusting and updating our policies. It's within an attorney's salary range, who would be a specialist in such area, for a single year. And Neola, we're getting value of the sense that it's a, you know, sort of a bulk rate, because other districts use them as well. So over a ten-year period, we're spending only about as much as we would pay for a full-time policy attorney for a single year.
Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Any further comments? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the out-of-county school board member travel?
Motion?
Moved by Ms. Thor. Seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C seven point two, you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, I did, thank you, Chair. Yeah, the key here is, we belong to a lot of, or at least one big association and some others as a district. And we go places, and it costs money. And we stay at some pretty nice places, you know. Maybe we could be open to a Motel Six type, but we stay at some good places, and we get something done, Tampa typically, Tallahassee, Mission Inn. But we get a lot, I think we get a lot for it, and this, because it is our personal travel and our personal stay, I believe this should be out on the table so folks know about it and can ask about it. And as far as I am concerned, it's highly legitimate and appropriate. So that was why I wanted it to be out on the actual agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the C A E Healthcare Incorporated Lucina Patient Simulator Birthing Mannequin Purchase?
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Campbell. Seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C eight point one, you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, this is a, this is a state-of-the-art mannequin. It's a, I think it's the way modern science is going in terms of artificial intelligence. This perhaps doesn't go all the way in that direction, but it's a rather large dollar amount, eighty thousand dollars. But I believe it puts us in the state-of-the-art realm of education. And I felt as though that needs to be out so people realize what's going on at this campus we're on right now, and that is, that is top-rate education. Now we just have to get certified up toward that, as that one speaker was indicating, right up at the top level in terms of accomplishment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the Second Amendment with Center for Collaborative Classroom Incorporated?
Motion?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C eleven point one, you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This, again, really goes to our core mission, which is education. It is with the University of Florida, top-rate, it's pilot. It's a, it's how we're going to get to our top ten percent rating. It helps our mission of education. It's the way we're going to have to get there. And with the University of Florida in this triangle, we have University of Florida, we have Tampa, we have Orlando in this beautiful educational triangle, and this is our link into probably some of the best. So thank you, Chair. Those are my comments.
Ms. Thor?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, to take that a step further, I really would like to recognize Dr. Gullett and her team. I remember a time when we didn't have the solid relationships that are needed to build these kinds of partnerships. So thank you, Dr. Gullett, and the rest of your team for creating that outreach and building, and in some cases, rebuilding those bridges. It's very, very important for all the reasons that Board Member Browning just stated. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Budget Resolution Number Seven, March twenty twenty-two Budget Amendments? Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C sixteen point one, you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, I have ten point one before that, sir. If we may, we can go to that.
We've already done ten point one, sir.
I don't think so. The independent contractor agreements?
I don't believe we have, sir.
I'm sorry.
I will go if you want it, just...
I'm sorry, I'll back up.
Yes, sir.
If I missed it. Let me redo that one completely. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreements for speech-language pathologists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, sign language interpreters?
Motion?
Moved by Ms. Thor. Seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C ten point one, you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is, anything that's over hundred thousand dollars, I believe has no place in a consent agenda, which is for small items. Routine, small items. This is, this is very large. I believe it's, it addresses critical needs, student critical needs. I'm with it, but I want the public to be able to know and to see the size of these numbers that are going out and the way, the way they expand. They start at a certain level, and that's pilot, then they mature, and now this is at four million dollars plus. So it's a big item, needs to be up on the agenda. Anytime you hit a million dollars, that's a big deal. So that's the reason I'm here. It is appropriate, it's extremely large, and it addresses critical needs, which is what our mission is. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posts have the same sign. Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Second Amendment with Center for Collaborative Classroom Incorporated?
So moved?
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Ms. King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C eleven point one, you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, I did, thank you, Chair. The, first, the item is large. It is in excess of a half million dollars, almost three-quarters of a million dollars. I want to, it helps target student needs at an early stage, which is incredibly important. However, I just want to be sure, as the superintendent perhaps, that I believe we're fine on this, but I want the, the community to know that HB one-five-five-seven, that is this, that is the social-emotional issue that was recently passed and signed by the governor. I just want to be sure we're in solid, we're in solid compliance. I just want to be sure we're in solid, we're in solid compliance with the, with the new modern, we had comment tonight from the floor. And so, it's, it's the kind of thing that makes, that gives comfort to the community when they know we're in compliance with state statute, if I could hear from the superintendent. I appreciate that.
Chair, if I may. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Browning, to your request, yes, we have every intention of continuing to be in full compliance with all state statutes and expectations.
And I think that's incredibly important for the community to know and because we're in custody of their children, it's, it's just, it's, it's a very important subject right now, all the way up to the governor through the Department of Education, through the legislature. So, thank you, Chair.
Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Thora.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this one forward, Board Member Browning, because it is a hot topic in the community, this whole idea of social-emotional learning curriculum. And first of all, it is important for the community to know that we don't have a choice. We are obligated via state statute to have to provide it, and that started after the Marjory Stonemans Douglas massacre. In response to that, there was some quick legislation and things moved very quickly. And there was a social-emotional learning curriculum called Sanford Harmony that was brought forward, and one of the best things about it was that it was free and it was available. So, we were able to start implementing it quickly with our students and therefore remain in compliance with the law. Well, it became clear in a period of time that there were some elements in that social-emotional learning curriculum that not everyone felt comfortable with. So sometimes free is not always the best, and maybe sometimes you get what you pay for. And maybe sometimes when you do your research and you find out about a person named T. Denny Sanford, you can go ahead and research that with the search engine of your choice, you will find out some very interesting things about that particular situation. So, my hat is off to this school board and also to the team for replacing that, and it's cost us a lot of money, I think, to go with caring school community, which is much more character-based, all of the things that we want our kids to be able to do to be successful in life, getting along with each other, that in my day didn't need a name, it was just what people did to help kids grow up properly. But that's, that's what it is, and it cost this district, I believe, over $400,000. So, we went from free to close to a half a million, to right a wrong. But it was worth it because our kids deserve the best curriculum and upbringing that we can help support. And I hope in the future that we will see and continue to see a much more collaborative partnership with each and every one of our families because we're responsible for each and every one of their children when they're on our campuses. So, that's a little background on that. Thank you for bringing it forward, Board Member Browning.
You are.
Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
I was going to add this to board comments, but since we're talking about it now, I'll mention it as well, to speak on the social-emotional learning, again, as it was brought up in comments this evening, public comments. As Ms. Thora has indicated, we want to ensure the public that, to be aware, that social-emotional learning curriculum is mandated, it is statutory requirement. And so, if individuals in our community or elsewhere around the state have concerns or questions about even the need for social-emotional curriculum, I recommend taking that up with legislators because that is a legislative decision that statutorily, all school districts in the state of Florida are required to teach social and emotional learning, in addition to all of the other things that we are required to. As for the need for it, what students have today with social media and sometimes lack of supervision in the home, students frankly are not learning at home or in the community. Things like character, respect, trustworthiness, integrity, conflict resolution, and other skills that we all may have learned in our homes. And we are not seeing that in today's student as frequently as that may have been present in other previous decades and generations. So, without that curriculum or teaching in our schools, I'm not really certain where students would receive that type of education. And while we desire to have every student succeed, that doesn't just mean academically. We want students to be successful and productive members of society, and right now, I can assure you, that's going to take curriculum and teaching for social and emotional learning and development for our students. And that's what's helping every student succeed. I have a lot more information I'll be sharing in my board comments, but because we're talking specifically about the curriculum, I wanted to share that now. Thank you.
Any further comments? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose have the same sign. Thank you. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the Budget Resolution Number 7, March 2022 Budget Amendments? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Thora.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C 16.1.
C 16.1, yes, thank you, thank you, Chair. Yes, budget time is coming, and these budget items, this is roughly a half million dollars, a little under, and as we try to educate ourselves and apply our, our personal educations that we have, we have a lot of talent in this community, in the 7,000-plus staff and on the board, as we move toward budget time, these, I'd like to see these explained. Superintendent, if you can take a crack at it, or, or just at the, at the very least, we, we handle these as they come up on the agenda because it's so important to me to, like, for example, this one, we had a recent situation where there might be a chance to borrow and then put in a general fund and then use in another situation. This has those looks to it, but is, is likely, just needs to be understood when resources are available, they have been accumulated, and accounting-wise, they get used now, not for the exact purpose they were borrowed for or, or accumulated for. And then, but we do create a liability, and revenue and expenditures are just, that's the, that's the name of the game. And the more you understand it, the more you feel comfortable about calling in, getting involved as a community person in these things, I think the better we will do as applying. We'll be approaching a billion dollars before long, and as we do, the sharper the community, the sharper the pencil, the, the better we'll do in meeting our education goal. Thank you, Chair. And if you could, Superintendent, maybe add to that comment or?
Chair Cummings, members of the board, thank you, Mr. Browning. I mean, we are required to provide these budget resolution amendments, and so you will see in the action rationale and results, the details of each of the funds and any changes to date, and so we always provide these very transparently and as required. If there are additional questions regarding any of the ones that have changes, then certainly our, our fantastic chief financial officer could speak to that, would not want to provide any incorrect information there, but, but essentially, these are required and we just were providing, excuse me, changes to the funds.
Thank you, Superintendent.
And thank you, Chair. And as anyone who's sat on any board at any given time, these are just budget amendments. A budget is a living and breathing document. Once you approve it, it is what it is, and then as you receive money, you show that in your budget, and as you allocate money, you show that in your budget. And so, that's what these essentially are. And just as Superintendent Gullett has said, we're required by law to put these in every month to show how the budget differs from what we originally approved back seven, eight, nine, 10 months ago. And so, each month, we have these amendments that we make simply to show, originally, we said we would spend this amount on this, or we said that we would have this amount of money coming in for this, and guess what? It changed when it actually happened. And so, that's what these are every month. Do we have sometimes that revenues are higher than appropriations? Absolutely. Do we have sometimes appropriations are higher than revenues? Absolutely. But again, it's one of those, while we approved it the way we did, there are changes that happen on a monthly basis based on allocations and revenues and expenditures as they come forth through the district. So, that's my understanding of what this is on a monthly basis and why we have to do it every single month and why the variances may occur. Sometimes it's because we received money in a different month than we had put it into the budget. Sometimes the amount is different. All of that can, can be variations to it, and so that's why we continue to have to approve these on a monthly basis, at least from my understanding.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair Campbell, that's very well said. That's the thing. Every number is understandable, ultimately, every column is understandable. It seems a little bit maybe complicated if you, if you look back on your, your finals and your work sets in college, it, sure, it's a challenge, but it's exciting because these are real, real dollars, and it's fun to watch this take place exactly as Vice Chair Campbell just indicated. That is the key, right there, and don't ever think that it's beyond you because it isn't. It is, it's right out there, it's, it's open, and it's transparent, and I love it on the table because on the table, you get to see everything, and it's very exciting, and these are, these are large amounts. So, thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the Broker Service and Compensation Agreement, Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services Incorporated?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Thora.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, pull item C 19.1 for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, and this isn't criticism, this is about 7% of some rather large dollars, and it goes back, I love the fact that this is right now, right out, on the, on the agenda. This is a, this is 7%. It's hard to, it's hard to realize how big that number can become, and it hasn't, it hasn't been brought up at this level, well, let's see, since 19, but it goes back to 14, the original agreement, in 2014, and it's just, I would like to see it brought up on the basis of the huge numbers that are involved, and this is not criticism of our current vendor, the, as a matter of fact, it's, it's actually very complimentary to them that they have, have stayed so long, but it is a lucrative contract. This is something that should be looked at. At 7%, my, my heart goes to 6% if I'm the, if I'm letting the contract. So, that's why I bring it up. I would like to see it get handled. I'm, I'm not for this because of the size, but I am not, I'm not critical of what's happening. I'm, I'm very interested, though, in it being analyzed, bid down, opened up, out here, other people that are listening that might be able to fulfill the contract, keep the competition rolling. So, I, I would like to see a little bit, that level of continuity, sounds almost like it's an employee, may even want to consider that. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose have the same sign?
Okay, in this case, we like to say aye, aye for no, okay.
Motion passes for one. May I have a motion to approve the Renew Athletic Accident Extracurricular Activity and Catastrophic Insurance Policies with Scholastic Insurance of Florida, L L C D B A School Insurance of Florida?
Motion.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The, the key to this is it has a very long history. It is ultimately paid by the parents, 82% or, or, you know, a large majority of it. These, this is the, the insurance extracurricular, if you're into a, it's catastrophic, it's injury-type insurance, and I would like to, it goes back quite a long ways. I would like to see it get, very similar to the previous, I'd like to see it get analyzed in a little bit, a little bit tighter fashion, by, by that I mean competition tight. I'm not criticizing, but it is over a quarter of a million dollars. And so, I would like to see this, even though it's the parents, or maybe because it's the parents that are paying this, I'd like it to be as economic as possible. So, I'm, I'm against it, but I'm not against, I have no criticism of the current situation other than I would like to see more competition to it. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose have the same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes for the one. May I have a motion to approve the Shared Expense Application for Spar Elementary?
Okay.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thora. Mr. Browning, pull this item as well.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Okay, so, so the key here is, and I'll talk about it more in my, it was item number 6.1, consent, and that is, it's, it's a big deal, and we're, we're doing a lot more with it, especially in the last six months or so. We're really, I think, getting on top of it and some really good information out there. But this is a consent, consensus, consent agenda item, typical, this is a model, this is what, and we have them in there, it's not that we don't do this, but I just want to have it, this is $828. Absolutely appropriate for a consent agenda. You're well under what I would consider a $50,000 to $100,000 limit and very routine because it is approved, it is, it's been looked at throughout the system, the superintendent's staff handles these on a regular basis and is very routine, $800 goes into the consent agenda, it could be 10, 12, 15 of these, and they just slide right in, it's perfect use of Robert's Rules, consent agenda. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose have the same sign. Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $82,107.56. $1,000 to Bellevue High School from Rotary Club of Bellevue. $1,000 to Bellevue High School from Citizens First Bank. Metal building valued at $10,000 to Pheasant Elementary School from the Carport Company. Construction services valued at $7,055.40 to Pheasant Elementary School from Stintiford Construction. Architect services valued at $5,000 to Pheasant Elementary School from Kimley Horn. Concrete slab valued at $3,000 to Pheasant Elementary School from Kimley Horn. Site testing valued at $1,200 to Pheasant Elementary School from Geo Technologies. Clay material valued at $11,000 to Pheasant Elementary School from Castle Rock. Permit fee. Builders' risk, equipment, fuel, benches, backstop valued at $14,127.16 to Pheasant Elementary School from Ocala Sunset Rotary. $1,000 to Forest High School from Citiz-. One thousand dollars to Forest High School from Citizens First Bank. Five thousand, eight hundred dollars to Fort McCoy School from Cactus Jacks, Cactus Jacks Two Incorporated. One thousand, five hundred dollars to Hillcrest Public School from Soakase Properties of Central Florida. Website advertisement and on-air time valued at eight thousand, five hundred, fifty dollars to Marion County Public Schools Human Resources Department from WCJB-TV twenty news. One thousand dollars to Lake Ware High School from Florida Education Foundation, Florida Civics and Debate Initiative. Two thousand, five hundred dollars to Lake Ware High School from their business partner, Lockheed Martin via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. One thousand dollars to Liberty Middle School from Florida Education Foundation. One thousand, eight hundred, seventy-five dollars to Marion Technical College from the Horatio Alger Association. Two thousand, five hundred dollars to Marion Technical College from the Horatio Alger Association. One thousand dollars to Stanton Weersdale from Recreation Plantation Quilting Club. One thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from Citizens First Bank. One thousand dollars to Westport High School from Florida Civics and Debate Initiative Project. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Ms. Thoraw, any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Passes unanimously. Ms. Campbell, could you give us a thank you tonight?
Absolutely, my pleasure. And first of all, I want to say, Ms. Redd, I'm coming to Pheasant because I want to see what this new building is. This is exactly how community partnerships are supposed to work. I'm not going to negate all of the other wonderful cash and tangible donations that we've received, but this is multiple, this is an example of multiple partners coming together to work together on a project that was at no expense, or at least limited expense to the district. Because we have a concrete slab, we have architect services, we have the permitting fees, we have the metal building itself. All of those things came together from multiple different partners and I can't wait to hear the backstory on it. So, Ms. Redd, I'm coming to see it. But to everyone who has donated, thank you so much for all of your support, all of the continued support and partnerships that we have in the school district. We can't do what we do without the amazing support, financial support, as well as non-monetary support that we receive from others. And frankly, I can't wait until our board policy changes on this. So all we do is just thank you instead of having to officially approve them in a motion in a second. So that's going to be changing hopefully sometime soon. But thank you again to everyone who has put forth dollars that are enhancing and helping our students succeed every day. Thank you.
Thank you. The following administrative briefing and work sessions are scheduled for May fifth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss board topic, FSBA board membership dues, and achieve twenty twenty-six strategic plan update goal four. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss self-funded health plan twenty twenty-two update and twenty twenty-three funding projection, two of two, achieve twenty twenty-six strategic plan update goal five, disposition of tangible property process and impact of growth in Marion County. Board comments? Ms. Lopez?
Board Chair, if you would just indulge me for a moment, I want to confirm that we did vote on C nine point one. Because I know that we accidentally went to, and we voted on the Second Amendment. But I don't recall that we actually voted on C nine point one because I know we had to go back and vote on C ten point one.
We did, we did.
We did.
But if you need me to take the vote again, we can take.
We voted. We voted on First Amendment. We did.
Yes.
Okay.
But if you need to.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am. Attorney Powers?
Nothing from legal. Thank you sir.
Thank you. Superintendent Dragan.
Thank you Chair, members of the board. I just want to underscore appreciation that we celebrated our after-school professionals appreciation week. And, and just to share again that what they do extends learning after school and before school. And it provides a great service to our community and to our families, working families, so that our students can extend learning in a safe environment. So, want to extend our appreciation to everyone who makes that possible. I also want to say again, thank you to our phenomenal business partners, to the CEP that helped make that happen, and Megan, Magamal and her team with the Public Education Foundation. And what a vital role they're playing. We're celebrating Public Education Foundation this week, but not just this week, but every day. They, and I shared this with them this morning at the board meeting, how much they are appreciated on behalf of the school district and on behalf of the board. And we appreciate their commitment to making sure that we're helping every student succeed. So, thank you.
Ms. Browning?
Yes, comments? Yes, thank you sir. Thank you Chair. The, I'll move just directly into the progress we've made with consent agenda and, and the headway, I think, and excellent communication from board members out to the public. This is a business meeting and business items need to be on the agenda, standalone, spoken to, analyzed. So, at least people get it, then we can get it. It can just fly right through, but at least it gets a chance for its day in the sun. I am looking for a limit. We've had some good analysis around the community. The county uses a very thorough process before something can get on the consent agenda. The city of Ocala uses a hundred thousand dollar limit, but there's very clear standards out there. As you can see from tonight, sometimes they'll slide into multimillion dollar items that just aren't, aren't spoken to directly. So, the second thing on that is in order to get on a consent agenda, you must have consensus. Consensus is synonymous to agreement. And it must be all five. It must be before it goes on, just by definition, Robert's Rules. So we must stay with Robert's Rules and I think we're getting there. I, I sense a wonderful cooperation. It's a little bit sort of been my thing to bring these up, but they're, they're received rather enthusiastically, I believe. And I think going forward, it's going to be a very positive opportunity. Searching websites. Searching websites is great, but the truth of the matter is, not everybody has access to a computer, not everybody can follow through a website. And especially, it kind of begs, how good is the website? How, how much information did you get? And you know, we're humans, we like to communicate verbally, we like to get information out there. So, going out to a, going out to a website to get your information is no excuse for an item, no substitute for an item being right smack on the agenda, especially if it meets the criteria that we decide to. And we can achieve it one at a time, but it ends up, it always slides over to one member, but it's okay. I mean, I don't, I don't mind doing that, but it could be right out on the agenda without a C in front of it. And, and then the public awareness part, business meeting, business items, and they relate to education. And it's the only way you get there. It's why we're approaching, or we will approach billion dollars. It's a big deal. And it all has to do with business and this is a business meeting and I don't, I don't mind and most, most of my colleagues are, are happy to take the time necessary to grind it out and be proper stewards of information and the dollars, those decisions and the dollars. We aren't making any exceptional, a second item, exceptional progress on our walk-in zone unitary status down at Stanton Weersdale, but we're still working on it. And behind the scenes, I should have some information to come forward on a civil rights situation, Title Six to present. That concludes my remarks, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Browning. Vice Chair Campbell?
Since you just ended on Stanton Weersdale, Mr. Browning, I actually visited out there yesterday. I was, I was trying to determine if I understood exactly what it was that the question is. I, I know that we don't have the opportunity to speak about it after a meeting because it's something that you continue to bring up in these meetings. So, when I was there, I noticed that there is a sidewalk all the way from forty-two to the school. I noticed there are some dirt roads that go away from the school that are obviously not school district property. So, perhaps if you don't mind elaborating a bit, because I also know that we only have about four or five students that even walk to Stanton Weersdale. And of those students, my understanding, when I was speaking with the administration there, is that of those students that walk to Stanton Weersdale, actually they tend to not walk. They kind of all get in a car and are, you know, transported off. So, while I understand that this continues to be a concern of yours, when I saw it myself, because I wanted to see it, I'm like, show me exactly what we're thinking about here. I did not see the issues that I believe have been brought forth.
That's probably my fault.
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much. I really appreciate that. The, it is a walk-in zone and, and a single student. It is our responsibility under unitary status for the six items. That's number six, transportation. If we don't transport, they get it. And it's the Rosa Parks Principle. One is all you need. So, we do it correctly and that's just the way it is. I know families from there that have moved simply because it is too treacherous. If you looked, and I will supply at our next meeting, superintendent has them already, both a video of it. But if I can just describe this, so you're approaching, it's just like a long driveway. It, it has been owned kind of bogusly by the school district and it's very fuzzy. No, obviously they, they don't, but they do, but they don't. We have.
I think you mean by the county, not the school.
Pardon me?
I think you mean by the county, not the.
No, 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 no. I mean the school district. And that's how, that's how complicated it is. You see, back in the day, there was a survey and the survey was never given up because there was, it just wasn't that level of sophistication at that level of, at that segregated school. So, if you will, there's this that goes, oh, fifty, seventy-five feet beyond, the survey goes beyond the road. The road is actually under ninety-five, three, six, one, the, what, what allows a road to be public, a public road, if it's used, was used for fifty years. So here you got this road that was used for fifty years by the public, by the school district and all. But they never vacated, they, back in the day, they pretended, or I won't say pretended, they claimed that their survey owned the road, that that was their property.
So, when you're saying road, I'm sorry, I'm just wanting to make sure I'm understanding. So we're talking about the paved road with homes on both sides with a sidewalk all the way from forty-two to the school.
No, this is not the paved.
Not the paved road. We're talking about the dirt roads.
It is, it's, it's a limestone road that we used for all activity to the school and all community.
So these are the dirt roads to the left.
Not dirt, limestone, a normal limestone road.
I started driving on it, it was kind of.
Dirt, sand, dirt. Yeah, it hadn't been.
I mean, and so I, I'm just, but again, I'm wanting to ensure because we continue to bring it up in our school board meetings. It is not school district property.
It is not, and that has to be stated by this school district because they have claimed it. And that has been the crux of, of it not being able to be, oh, that belongs to the school district, go talk to them, when the county is putting in the amenities for the road. That has been the issue and it takes a quitclaim deed. So they did a quitclaim deed, but they didn't really give it up. So, I'm telling you, title, it's, it's a foggy area and we can clear this up in a minute. It's so simple, but it takes authority to do it.
The number of students, again.
Yes.
That we are, we guarantee, because I know a couple of the students that live actually there on the sidewalk part of the, you know, I understand that, but again, that we, we have verified that there is at least one student that is trying to travel this limestone pathway.
Yeah, it's more, yeah, it's one or more. And you would not be able to do it. You would not be able to do it. And the, the folks that have been there, that live there, we have multi-generations. This is sixty-fifth year. So, that's like three generations of, of, of people and they all know it.
I'm not, yes, I'm not trying to, to, to cut you off, Mr. Browning. My understanding is, yes, there generationally, there may have been issues three generations ago or even two generations ago. But the volume or even minute numbers of students that this is impacting is, I don't want to say insignificant, because as you say, just one student matters. I fully understand the, the conversation. However, in seeing it and understanding the report that we have all received about this, I'm, I'm honestly still questioning why it continues to be a school board conversation because I don't know that there's anything that we as a school board can do to impact something that we don't own.
It's Title Six, it's our responsibility. You do not own around your school, but Title Six, you do not transport those students, must do walk-in. So that was why the case was opened. The case was opened in Atlanta and it was closed under the last administration and very, very hard fought. We actually, it, we applied the law, the lawyer for the school board, fought it tooth and nail. And it was absolutely, I think, totally inappropriate at the time, but we just didn't have the horsepower to win. They got it closed. We can get it reopened, but it's not a good thing to reopen because unitary status, once they, a judge starts looking at unitary status, you must comply. And this is, has never been in compliance, even though back in the seventies, it was, it was stated it was in compliance, but it was not. And it is not right now. And just to come to the conclusion of a practical point, there's a stop sign. As you come a hundred and sixty-seventh, as you drive up it, this is fifty years of use, as you drive up it, sixty years, well, fifty years of use. As you drive up, now you're driving your vehicle, there is no stop sign there because that was claimed to be a county, a, a, a school board property. So they, county could not put a stop sign in. That's the argument today. And it's a round robin, kind of a dog chasing its tail argument. And it's, it's, it's so bogus as to be, if we could just announce, I will gladly take the entire board out or go to the, this is public record, you can, anybody can get this, the superintendent has it, it is a video. We had an educator from Gainesville come down and be the actor and work it, work it all through. But if you're just walking along that sidewalk you were talking about, heading for the school, there isn't sign one that indicates this is a crossing, there isn't sign one that indicates that students are likely to be walking through, there isn't sign one in any regard.
And I fully understand that, Mr. Browning, but as someone who was on that road yesterday.
Yes.
Because of the nature of the, it is not limestone, it is sand. And, and because of the nature, I can't, honestly, as someone who was on it, I can't fathom someone even approaching that where you're saying doesn't have a stop sign and not merging into traffic, there's not even traffic, but, but to not pause or yield or, and I understand there's not a stop sign, I understand there's not a yield sign, I understand all of that. But as someone who was just on that road yesterday, I can't imagine someone driving it wouldn't stop or yield or understand they're merging onto, from a dirt road to a paved road as anyone would do in any. would do in any dirt driveway that doesn't also have a stop sign, onto a paved road. So I, we don't need to belabor the point. I just wanted to express that. I was there yesterday. I still am struggling, understanding the questions, because again, I was on that road, and...
Let me ask, let me ask, if I may, Attorney Powers, what would it take, what, from, I'm asking sunshine law here, for me to take, I've met out there, but I wasn't on the board when Ms. King was out looking at it, and that's been more than five years ago. What would it take to, could I, could I travel with her in that, in that area? Is that legal? Would that be legal, because we have brought it up, and it is, we do have the video, could I, could I, can I step through it that way? Or how would, how would we do that? Because I do want to make a full communication, if I may. How would we do that?
The answer to your question is that any matter which may come before the board for any vote at any point in the future would require that it be public invitation, and that public would be invited to see and participate. And of course, you're sort of referencing a meeting of the board, and the board would have to determine that it wanted to hold a special meeting by doing so.
Okay, thank you. Well, if the board would go, I would certainly, I will certainly sponsor that. We do go places. I would certainly sponsor it. It's the 65th anniversary, and it is a safety issue. It is our school. It is from one foot to, I'm just going to say 100 feet, with no, zero safety signs, zero safety blinking lights, zero safety anything. So I think it's incumbent on this group to go with Board Member Browning on this recommendation. I know it doesn't happen a lot, and I won't be, I won't be, you know, screaming and yelling, but I will continue on. I won't stop on this. If we could get that, if we could get a meeting, I will be glad to chair it. I'll be glad to handle any procedural requirements that are necessary. I'll take full responsibility for that.
So should we decide to go in that direction, and I'm certainly not speaking for the board, but should we decide to hold such a meeting, I highly recommend we do so at either the beginning of school or at the end of school, so we actually can see students participating in a walking zone. I highly recommend that, for us to do that, because I don't believe what is occurring is, or what is being spoken about is actually occurring. So, moving on, I have some, several additional comments, if you can, but thank you for entertaining those thoughts there, Mr. Browning. So obviously, it is Public Education Foundation Week, and Dr. Gullett mentioned that. We had Megan Magamol here this evening, and obviously, we heard about all the wonderful business partnerships that they have. But I also want to draw attention to several of the other great programs of the Public Education Foundation. Obviously, their Grant for Great Ideas program provides thousands of dollars in grants to teachers with innovative and unique tools for connecting and engaging students. Their Tools for Teaching Store provides thousands of dollars in free school supplies for teachers all throughout this district, and even some of our Logistics Academy students work to distribute those supplies to those that aren't able to visit the store personally. Their Teacher-to-Be scholarships for non-instruct staff provided the financial support to expand their educational opportunities in the pursuit of becoming teachers. One of their most recognizable programs, the Golden Apple Teacher Program, recognizes all of the Teachers of the Year throughout the district, and other programs they have as well. But I know that this Public Education Foundation Interest and Awareness Week that we're celebrating, and it may even be the first time we're actually devoting a week to it, but I wanted to mention some of those additional things for the public to be aware, that all the wonderful things our Public Education Foundation does. Also wanted to mention, as I had said earlier, when our representative from the City of Ocala Parks and Recreation was here last evening with the jazz concert on the downtown square, where District One represented Lake Weir High School and Forest High School jazz bands that happened to be in District One. I know they're all our students, Reverend Cummings. I know he always says they're all our students. But I also happen to be proud that the District One schools were the ones that were on the downtown square last night, doing a jazz concert with Lake Weir and Forest High School. And both of those band directors, because they both are very far apart on Merricamp Road, they actually used the hashtag Merricamp Music between those two schools, because they are both in a unique situation. We have two high schools essentially on the same road. We have partnerships with the City of Ocala Parks and Recreation Department for that opportunity, and potentially wanting to look at how we might be able to coordinate that with some future events that the city might have, to even increase attendance. Because I assure you, it was an amazing jazz concert. Both high schools went back and forth, back and forth, and then they did one collective song together. It was, it was really a great time. Also, while we're still talking arts, the student today from 8th Street, also from District One, had a wonderful poster that the city recognized, and so grateful for that, and looking forward to the superintendent's art show this week at the Appleton Museum. So just lots of things happening on the arts front. This week, as we mentioned, is After-School Professionals Appreciation Week. I've already shared my appreciation for them, and how much of an advocate I am for them. But I also want to make a note that next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. I had a teacher tell me the other day that a couple, just a couple short years ago, that everyone was acknowledging how amazing teachers were, when parents were forced to be home teaching their students. That was only two years ago, two years ago this March, when everyone appreciated teachers, frankly, as much as they were appreciating the healthcare workers who were dealing with the pandemic. But now, more than ever, we should honor and recognize our teachers, because this post-pandemic student is a very unique individual, and we want to ensure that our teachers are appreciated so much. And next week, we need to ensure that we are, I guess, starting to appreciate them again. But not that we don't appreciate them every day, but designating a week for Teacher Appreciation Week. If there are any teachers listening, probably not two hours in, but we appreciate you. Thank you for the hard work that you're doing. Thank you for the dedicated, amazing staff that we have all throughout the district. It's not just the teachers, but when we have these designated weeks for them, I want to acknowledge that. I want to tell you all a little story, an experience that I had yesterday in one of our schools. And I'm not going to say which school, I'm not, it doesn't matter. But one of our youngest learners happened to be in the office of this school when I walked in. I'm going to call him Jeffrey. That's not his name. That's, I'll use a pseudonym. It's not his name. But when I walked into this school, he was quite upset. He was sitting in the office. I asked him, and I asked what was going on with Jeffrey, and he said, "Get out of here. Leave me alone." And he just kept, had this scowl on his face. He said, "Get out of here. Leave me alone." Tried to dialogue a little bit with Jeffrey from a distance, and that wasn't going very far. He kept the same posture and tone when I was far away from him. So I went beside him, and knelt down beside him, and got on his level. I proceeded to tell him that I cared about him, and I understood how it was to have a tough day, and that I wanted him to have a better day. And with his back now turned to me, and his face toward the wall, I continued telling him how much I cared for him, and how much I wanted him to have a better day. And I asked him what it would take for him to have a better day. And he turned and looked at me, and he goes, "Snack", which made me laugh, and the ladies in the office kind of laughed as well. But then they started frantically trying to find him a snack, and he started talking about cheese balls, and that he wanted goldfish. Okay, so everybody's trying to look for goldfish. All right, all right, great. And the ladies were actually unable to find the goldfish. So I got back down and said, "So these ladies really care about you, too. We want to make sure that we're helping you have a better day, but they can't find goldfish. What else can we do to help your day?" And he said, "Well, Ms. Such-and-such," whoever his teacher was, "has goldfish in her classroom." I said, "Oh, okay. So would you like to go back to class and see if we can make that work for you?" And he proceeded to be calm, walked out of the office, and went right back to class. So what does this story tell us? It tells me that we have to get on their level, we have to show empathy, we have to show we care, we have to ask good questions, listen to specific needs, and see how we can meet every student right where they are, because we don't know what these students are going through. And unfortunately, it isn't always going to work just as well as it did for me yesterday with this young learner. We have a lot of students right now that are exhibiting really unruly behavior, that frankly, we have not ever seen. I was talking to one of the members of our district administrative team, who was recently at a national conference, and Marion County is not alone. It is something that we are seeing in unprecedented numbers across this nation. Students are exhibiting unruly behavior everywhere. Yesterday, I received discipline data for this district through the first week of April. What I received is beyond alarming. The most common infractions at the secondary level, with more than 2,000 incidents each, our attendance violations, inappropriate behavior, failure to comply with school rules. We have issues of disrespect and disruptive conduct, and more than 1,000 offenses of repeated insubordination. But you know what the most alarming statistic to me is? More than 17,000 incidents of behavioral disruption that we've had in our secondary schools are happening in classrooms. In speaking with a secondary principal just today, the vast majority of our students are doing what they should be doing. But the percentage of students making poor decisions continues to grow daily. I'm still seeking solutions. We still need help. We need support. We need new voices, new faces, just like I was in that elementary school office yesterday. I told the staff when I walked out, sometimes it just takes a new face and a new voice. They very well may have done exactly what I did yesterday, numerous times before with that one student. Sometimes it just takes a new voice, a new caring tone, and a new face. We need people who can help these struggling students with conflict resolution, belonging, and needing to feel hope. We only have a few weeks left of school, and we can do this if we have more community help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Ms. King?
Yes. Well, we said a lot about teachers. So with discipline, I'm going to also add that we need to back those teachers. So when they come before us with discipline problems, this board needs to back those teachers and not be waffling on that, and I'll just leave it at that. And I think we may know what I'm talking about. I would like to bring up our work sessions again. I keep hearing, you know, conversation and concerns over that. And it is true, I think we're leaving out parts of our community if we only have them in the morning, kind of like we are right now if we just have them in the evening. It was proposed that maybe we could do, like, the first week in the morning, and then, like, work sessions, and then alternate in the evenings. That sounds like a great idea to me, and a compromise. I don't know what you guys think about that, your thoughts are. But I'm bringing that up for discussion again, just because I know this is a board that wants to hear our community and their concerns. And so I'm thinking, if we do have a works, a school board meeting in the morning, we can get, you know, people that can attend then. And if later on in the month, or however we decide to do it, then they could come in the evenings. What are your thoughts on that?
Ms. Campbell?
Thank you for bringing it up, Ms. King. I actually meant to bring this up in my comments, because as you all know, I had to leave a little bit early, and I've listened to the whole extra hour that you all spent discussing the topic. So thank you for having the opportunity to weigh in. I was quite concerned with the thought of all morning meetings, because if we only go with morning meetings, we'll never be able to hear from our students again, frankly, because they're in school. So I would be all in favor of considering an alternate arrangement, where we have a morning meeting, and then an evening meeting, and then a morning meeting, and an evening meeting, whether that's work sessions or board meetings or both. Because I do want to ensure that we're not alienating both our staff as well as our students. And with only having morning meetings, we would certainly not have the opportunity of what we did this evening, to recognize students for their hard work and dedication. And, or we wouldn't be able to hear the wonderful music we heard in our last board meeting. So that was my significant concern with the conversation and the way it seemed as if it ended. So I appreciate you bringing it back up.
Ms. Thoreau, I don't know, because this is kind of your baby, and...
The community baby.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing it up. And Vice Chair Campbell, this was a big part of the conversation after you left, was not to have our students and our teachers be left out. So there, it was brought forward about having an evening meeting, either quarterly, you know, whenever it would be, would be what it would be. And it went so far as Mr. Guyquod offering the Downtown Hilton for that, so that we could have a fun place to have a board meeting, and also to do those student recognitions that we would continue to do anyway, in a different way, even if we did meet in the morning. But I 100% agree that we don't want to alienate or not, or put ourselves in a position to not be able to celebrate our students and recognize them. And we certainly don't want them to lose instructional time. Interesting concept, Board Member King, because that's exactly what Pasco County does with their board meetings. They alternate one in the morning and one in the evening. I believe their work sessions are always in the morning. If we started our work sessions at 5:30 in the evening, we'd be here till well after midnight, so I'm not sure that that's workable, but worth entertaining.
Maybe we only have two topics.
But we want to get, there's a lot going on in the district, and we want to be able to stay ahead of it as best we can. I continue to really feel for folks that are unable to come. I do think there's a, people show up when there's something that means something to them on the agenda, and that's when they come, and they make time to come, whether it's in the morning or whether it's in the evening. So something I would also like to float again, and I've mentioned this before, is at the state level and other meetings as well that I've attended, they do have a WebEx where people can call in. And so again, they're in the comfort of their own home, they can wait for the time to call, they can make it a priority during that time and not be sitting here. People these days are busy, and they're obviously going through a lot, as you stated, Vice Chair Campbell. So I think that having parents home with their kids is probably a good idea. But I'm willing to do anything that is going to continue to move us forward, and making sure that we're at least providing the opportunity. Now, whether or not people show up physically, that's going to be their choice, and as it should be. But I do like the idea of putting technology to good use. In addition to public comment live, do public comment via WebEx or whatever platform we're going to call it. I was just at a county commission meeting in Pasco County last week, and they've been doing that for at least two years that I know of. Works like a charm.
Yeah, but even, I think that's another topic with the WebEx and that, because then I really caution us to be careful, because I would hate to see classroom teachers or our employees taking time out of the classroom or from their work, because they're trying to get on a phone call and come talk to us. So I'm looking at that, talking about the timeframe as a little, as a distraction. So I just want us to, sometimes there's unintended consequences that happen, you know. So...
Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you. Well, I like the 5:30. I believe it's a business hour. Early in the morning, we've got those nine o'clock meetings already, so we've got that covered, I think, in the workshop category. They are not well-attended, but I wouldn't expect that they would. Often, someone's coming off a late shift or starting an early shift, getting kids to school, that type of thing. So I would say 5:30. Then, since we do broadcast, we're, a person is able to see it at any hour that works for them. So the hour really isn't the issue. I did meet with the, with Attorney Power on my request for a... I did meet with the, with Attorney Power on my request for a, an executive session on this subject. And so I'm satisfied with that. And he'll do his magic in that regard in terms of communicating appropriately within the sunshine law. So I come down very, very hard on our stable, what we have right now. It works with the way society works. That means you work typically during the day. And then in the evening, you've got the ability to go in, someone watches the children. If you've got to go in, or you could even bring the children to the meeting. But I believe that works best. Workshops are fine because they can go literally all day. Sometimes we've seen them go into the evening as well as things like the Inola situations. So the day is there for it, but those are not high visibility. Sometimes we have nobody here looking. So I'm very much in favor of enfranchising what we have and what has worked going forward. It's almost a no-brainer for me. I'm very in favor because we've got them both covered. We've got the kids, we've got the nine o'clock and we've got the five o'clock. We've got it handled, it's done, it's pretty well done. And if we want to have a celebratory scenario, we pick another day. We go to the Hilton, say a Friday night or whatever it is. And really do it right. Don't have it compete with a business meeting. Because once it gets into the play of a business meeting, for this board member, a business meeting business is going to prevail. That's the way it has to be for me.
Thank you. From my understanding, when we started this conversation, the goal of this whole topic was for this board to be more accessible to our community, for us to be more inclusive and not exclusive. I got some of those emails as well. I had some of those conversations about how we incorporate or we pull more people from the community into these meetings, into our school board meetings. I like the idea, I love the idea because someone sent it to us specifically about the alternation of the meetings. One in the evening, one in the morning for each. And I like the idea of moving the work sessions because the work sessions tend to be longer. So I would be more, I personally would be more inclined to leaving the work sessions where they are and possibly alternating our school board meetings evening to mornings. We have twice, we have two board meetings a month. To me, that would make it a whole lot easier to schedule. And I would still be in favor of us doing it as a pilot and seeing how it works from that point of view. So that's where I'm at with that whole situation. But it was the intent, my understanding, the intent of us even having the conversation was to be more inclusive and not exclusive. I'm not in favor of us having a separate board meeting or special board meeting or anything like that. We have enough board meetings and we set special board meetings when we need to or emergency when there are need to. I think we can still do what we need to do and include the public and be more inclusive by possibly just alternating the two board meetings. Ms. Thor?
Yes, and we do that now with our resolutions and our celebrations and acknowledgements. So we're already mixing business with pleasure if you want to look at it that way. I could support that. I think that, you know, it just all depends on who you talk to. I talk to people that work second shift, I talk to people that work nights and they feel excluded. And I also know again that if it's a matter that a citizen is passionate about, they're going to find a way to show up. And we've had some very, very crowded work session days when we were navigating through all the COVID-19 stuff, you know. So again, I think people are going to show when it's a topic that's really near and dear to them. But if we are providing at least the opportunity and being more inclusive to everyone, then I think that that goes a long way. It shows concern and caring and empathy and recognition of the whole community. You know, not everybody's work schedule is like everyone else's. And I don't think that there really is a specific traditional workday anymore. Not with remote working and things like that. You can work all night, you know? You can sleep all day.
Ms. Campbell?
And I appreciate this dialogue again. The only reason that I perhaps could also entertain having an evening or a five, five o'clock, four o'clock work session is because on some of those topics, and it would be a very structured agenda. We wouldn't be able to have five, six, seven, eight things on a work session agenda. But perhaps one or two major things that we know would be impactful and engaging to our employees and they would want to be able to weigh in while we are doing the work of the work session. We know that's when we accept public comment. We know that's whenever we have all of that dialogue ahead of us actually voting on anything in particular. So that's the only reason that I also would entertain the idea of whether it's late afternoon or, you know, four, five o'clock, whenever that might be with, again, a very structured agenda. We know that our work session just went from 9:00 AM to almost four without a lunch break. We know that that can happen, but it also depends on what the topics are that are on the agenda. So I think I'm hearing that we might want to do a morning and an evening on an actual board meeting where we're doing official business of the meeting, similarly to the way, again, county commissions in the morning and city councils in the evening. So I think it would kind of align with what two other local governing bodies are doing. But again, I would entertain even potentially having one work session that might have a couple of topics on it that we think our employees might want to weigh in on before we ever put it to vote.
If we, if, if, if.
If, 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 if.
I have a lot of stories to tell you about if. But if we were to move a work session to a evening, it could not have a whole lot of items on it. Again, we've done eight-hour work sessions. And to get away from some of the things, we're trying to be considerate of staff, considerate of the folk that put this together for us. We could not have, we could, it would not be good to have an eight-hour work session. It would not be good to have, it wouldn't be good to have a four or five-hour work session, to be honest with you. Because that would not be conducive to supporting staff. Because we also have to support our staff in this whole picture, in this whole realm of things. So I want, how are we going to vote on this? I'm good with the school board meetings alternating. We figure out how we're going to do these work sessions. But if we're going to move work sessions, it needs to be very few items that will, and that comes, and again, our superintendent, it's the superintendent's agendas. It's the superintendent's work session agenda. Because those are her recommendations that she's bringing forward to this board. So are we handcuffing our people by telling them they can only bring so many items? Superintendent, I'd really like to hear some of your input on this conversation as well.
I appreciate that, Chair. Members of the board, I mean, last conversation that I recall that the board had last week was around the school board meetings and those are the notes that I took. Certainly if the board, if it's the pleasure of the board to do work sessions, I would have some concerns about those being in the evening because, as you said, eight hours was our last work session with only a 10-minute break, as I recall. We have an upcoming work session agenda that actually has only two items. The next one is only two items. However, that is not typical. So we would have to be very mindful. And I don't want to reduce the information that we're sharing with the board and with the public. I don't want that to be an unintended consequence to that. So we are committed to, as one standing item now, is talking about the strategic plan every time we meet at a work session. And I've included, as well as you all know, through our conversations, added how we're using our federal funds to improve student outcomes. So I don't want to reduce any of those. I think those are important to talk about and have discussion about. So my caution would be doing anything that would reduce important topics for discussion.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I would concur. I didn't even think, I didn't think we were talking about moving work sessions from their current position, their traditional current position. I wouldn't be in favor of moving that. I think that's stable and it also relates to staff. And for my part, I would like to see all, if, you know, unless it's executive session, from a sunshine law, that guidance perspective, as much as possible in the open in these work sessions during the day as we currently do. And that way, the press and the people can catch up as we catch up. You know, it's all on the same level. And that's the key because once we get at that level and nothing is behind the wall or in the shade or whatever, unless it's an executive item that needs to be that way, then I get it. But if it's just normal, it's certainly be open and we should have it during the day. I can't imagine pulling everybody after a full workday, pulling everybody, staff and everything back in for evening. Wow. I don't know, I can't, somebody has to help me with that logic because I can't get that at all. Yeah, and these folks shouldn't be here. To my way of thinking, that is $15,000, $20,000 worth of sitting there. I don't know, they could be at home, having dinner with their family. There is no way in the world I would require it. And this isn't criticism of you, Superintendent, I'm just saying. Every time you spend $10,000, $15,000, I don't know what it costs us to have those people here. And I know they're on contract, but we still, you only work a certain amount as a human being, a certain amount of time. And I don't, I don't get it. I don't get it. So I'm happy to have it happen during the day. And then our work, our board meetings, five o'clock, boom, we nail it. And this is turning into a bit of a work session because I think we were just about done about, you know, at about two hours. And that's appropriate. And this is what a work session is. And it should start, you know, it's the way it is right now at nine o'clock in the morning and just go. And I think we're all established to that. And I think that's an important point, especially for this board member. It's very important that those things be stable and set. So.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
Okay. I can give a good example why our employees are here tonight. A perfect example is we had a constituent come before us with a concern of something that's happened in the school. And the superintendent immediately directed her area, elementary area, you know, super director to that constituent. So during meetings, things arise and happen where they need immediate attention rather than Dr. Gullett, you know, waiting till tomorrow and stuff like that. They, if there's any concerns that we address as a board, then they're here to speak on that too. So that's why they're here and that's why they're here.
I get it, I get it, I understand that argument.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. And then, so also to direct us back about the question, as a board, are we comfortable alternating from the work, school board meetings, excuse me, not work sessions, school board meetings from maybe evening, morning, alternate those?
I am.
Did I hear that right? So we're comfortable with that? Okay, that's great.
I think you have four that are in favor.
Okay, and then I, can I make the recommendation that will allow Dr. Gullett to decide which one her and her team thinks best and which way, you know, how we want to do that? Excuse me?
Are you talking about for work session?
I'm talking about school board meetings.
Okay.
So whether, so maybe rather than us trying to decide that, let her and her team.
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
Putting forth her agenda. Do we need a motion on that? Do we have to have a motion in a second to?
It was mentioned during the work session that we had a work session on this topic.
Right.
And that we brought back in the future for a vote on a future agenda for the board. If the board, as a consensus, given the further discussion that we've had after the work session and then tonight, based on sort of clarifying that, if that is the direction the board wants to go and we truly have consensus that we would alternate a morning and an evening meeting and then allow the superintendent to choose the times, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Say majority or a consensus?
No, consensus. If we have consensus, then we would allow the superintendent to then choose the exact times and then we're done. If we, if we don't have consensus, we just have a majority, then it needs to come back for a more discussion and vote. But I think what's, what, we would have to clarify the motion that you're making. But what I'm hearing you say is to alternate the school board meetings, not the work sessions. No, let's talk about the work sessions, just the meetings. Instead of having them both in the evening, having one in the morning and one in the evening. So for example, first Thursday in the morning, or first, sorry, first Tuesday in the morning and third Tuesday in the evening, whatever.
Second.
So I'm sorry, second and fourth. So if that is the pleasure of the board, that the board collectively does agree that the, that there should be a morning, evening and a, I'm sorry, a morning meeting and an evening meeting each month, then the timing of that, and I think the consensus that you had all said before, was if that were going to be the case, we would want those to be at nine o'clock or after, not prior to nine o'clock. So if you clarify the motion exactly as you want it, then if you have consensus as to that fact, then you would allow the superintendent to determine exactly which one of those was going to be a morning session and one's an evening session. However, we would still then need to update that with the Department of Education because at our organizational meeting is when we set these things. So typically, that's, it's an amendment, this essentially is an amendment to the organizational meeting that will be held in November. So we would still need to notify the Department of Education. And we're due to notify them with the minutes as well for our address, for example, because our address changed. And even though we've notified it by their means, there's a statute that says we're supposed to do it with the minutes of the meeting in which we did it. So if there's consensus and that's what you wish to go for, I hope I haven't confused the issue further.
So Attorney Powers, they can make a, someone can make a motion now, correct? And it be seconded and as far as about the specifics of moving the meeting to?
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be something that we would act on as a motion. If there is, we can clarify the content of a motion, it doesn't need to be a motion in a second. If, as a consensus, you guys have discussed it and you believe that you have an understanding of what, and just as you would in a motion, spelled out what you're going to allow Dr. Gullett to have the authority to do, then I don't think it requires a motion and second and vote. You're essentially asking them, asking her to, you know, to enact the consensus of the board. But we can alternatively hold it as an agenda item and then have a motion, second, vote. And we would call that then an amended organizational meeting under which the superintendent would preside, just like she does in an organizational meeting. And we would send an amended update to the Department of Education.
Right, and I believe we were going to vote on May 10th regarding this anyway. So basically, so that's.
Ms. Thor had her hand there, Mr. Brown?
Yes, just confirming what Board Member King just clarified, that this is already going on an agenda for May 10th to give all of us time to think about it, talk about it a little bit more. We raised it tonight. So my only question would be to make sure that whatever goes on the May 10th as an agenda item, you never know what this board is going to eventually decide. So would it have to be so specific as to say for May 10th that to have the meetings be alternating mornings and evenings? And if so, we want to make sure that that's on there if the majority of us agree to that. I don't think, I don't feel like I'm hearing a unanimous anything to be able to do anything tonight. Does anyone else?
Right. And I would prefer that action, I mean, I, as your legal representative, would prefer that there not be action taken tonight by the board.
Right.
What I, what, what I would say is that if we are having an amended organizational meeting, which is what it is when we're discussing amending the school board times, that's one over which the superintendent presides and the board votes and then we send the minutes to the Department of Education. It can be part of our regular meeting. But in that instance, there will need to be a specific motion. It will need to have the details spelled out and then it will need to be voted on. And then that's an up or down vote. So, you know, that.
That reorganizational meeting or that agenda item is for May 10th?
That would be correct, yes.
So on May 10th, that, the determination would be made whether we're up or down or not, Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you. I am 100% in favor of maintaining 5:30 for our meetings. So I, there is no consensus of the switching.
I understand.
Just to be, just to be out and transparent on that. Five o'clock, five, uh, 5:30, our current situation, nine o'clock for our workshops, I am in favor of that. Thank you.
And so that will obviously garner some discussion at our, at our May 10th agenda for the organizational meeting. So for a reorganizational meeting.
Well, I'm trying to look. We'll meet next week, correct, for a school board, for a work session? So maybe our superintendent could bring it up during our administrative briefing and tell us what her thoughts are for the times and stuff, and we can have that discussion so that on May 10th, we know, we have some idea what's coming before us, if that makes sense.
We're voting on something that suits.
Suits the superintendent? Or Dr. Gullett, what are your thoughts?
So for, thank you, Chair members of the board. So for clarification, my question is, are you asking for me to propose then, on behalf of my team, which would be the better weeks to alternate? Which would be, I'm sorry, they're going to be alternate. Which would be the best week to do the morning and which would be the best week to do the evening? Is that what your?
Right.
Request is?
Yes.
We could certainly do that. I, I will say that, and I'm looking at the, the draft for the May 10th, we already have it listed as a discussion item. I will tell you that right now, the plan is it's listed as, under Attorney Powers, as a discussion item, school board meetings, new time proposal. So I just wanted to clarify that it is in there and that is our intent to keep it under a discussion item, unless the board would like to do that otherwise. But certainly, to your request, we could provide some information under the briefing if you choose to say, you know, either we're making a recommendation for one or the other or there is none and I, I would have to talk to the team and consider what impact that might be, but we can certainly do that.
Okay.
I kind of got an issue with that because we, board members brought this, this, this issue to, to the light and now we're throwing it on the superintendent and her team.
Well, the only reason I was just, I was just suggesting that she's with her team and would propose which one, which morning and which evening, whether it be the second or fourth, to accommodate them. Hey, if we want to act as a board tonight, I'm good to say like maybe the first school board meeting will be mornings and then the fourth, the second one will be evenings if we want to make that decision.
That's where I'm at because we kind of brought it to them. And I think it's unfair to kind of throw it on the superintendent and her team. I think we can either give the direction and say, hey, which one we want and I'm not saying we're going, but we can at least say which one we want in the evening, which one we want in the morning to, to alleviate that issue.
And if I may, Reverend Cummings, that's, that's why you'll see that this agenda item, as posted for the, for the May 10th agenda, is listed under me as a school board attorney. Normally it would not be. Normally that would be something that is part of the organizational meeting and the statute is clear that the superintendent does have to preside over that. However, this was something that was brought up by the board and the legal department typically assists in executing the wishes of the board for those purposes. And, and so Dr. Gullett and I had discussed exactly that. So this agenda item will appear under school board attorney. And then, you know, the, it's, it's because it is sort of the board's will, not something the superintendent is bringing on her behalf as the proposal.
Well, I'm, oh, sorry. I would like to think that if there is some overarching reason that the board may be unaware of as to which week of the month would be better, if there is one, to for a morning or an evening, then I would appreciate knowing that. I think we're pretty clear on the fact that most of us are feeling like doing the morning and the evening alternate is a good idea. And so if there is anything compelling that becomes unearthed, you know, by the team, then let us know.
Right.
And Chair, if I may, and I'm happy to do that on behalf of the team and, and just again to clarify, and there may be no issues either way, and I'll be happy to say that as well at the time, but certainly could bring that under the briefing at your request on, on Thursday, next Thursday, prior to the vote. And that way you have information, if we have any, that might be a factor.
Thank you.
We're talking about considerations of the nature of every Tuesday, there could be a specific reason or, or every other Tuesday, there may be a specific reason why a school board meeting would not be appropriate for a specific time. You're just asking for input on that, right?
There is any.
If there are any, right.
Right. King, we still with you?
So we're good and I can move on? Okay. Yes. I also, Ms. Megan, Megan Mall was in here earlier this evening and I was so excited, I guess, to see Beth and, and Kevin here, but I didn't acknowledge her. So I do want to take a moment to just personally tell her thank you. She actually had 82 businesses in here and that is a first, that is for Marion County and that's from hard work, dedication. So hats off to Megan and her team for their just hard work and effort. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thoror?
Thank you. Yes, just another great example of the lengths that everyone is going to bring this community together. And, and we do know that strong communities and strong schools go hand in hand and, and it truly is a partnership. I have three things on my mind tonight. The first one is the old school vocational training, more sophisticatedly known as career and technical education training. Every time I see an example of how far we have come and are continuing to go and the birthing machine, I didn't know they had one of those, but we're going to get one. That was on the consent agenda tonight that, that you pulled, Board Member Browning, the, the birthing mannequin. I mean, who knew? So I learned something tonight. But also the pen that I'm using, it's just an example, it's pretty neat, Palm Tree, Florida. These are made by students at Hillcrest School. They write really well, they come in all kinds of fancy colors and it is just one of their many vocational projects that, that they work on. So just wanted to give a little shout out to Hillcrest School, really enjoyed being there this week as part of, and leadership Marion County Public Schools, Leadership MCPS. And I'm very pleased, I'm not sure how it happened this way, but so far Oak Crest, which is in my district, Hillcrest, which is in my district, and then also Maplewood, which is in my district, have been part of that tour. And yes, you have to invest a little bit of money if you're a community member to participate in this program, but boy, talk about pulling the curtain back and getting a chance to see everything that it takes to run our school system and, and get the opportunity to see people in action. It's our inaugural class and I get the feeling that it's going to continue. All of the citizens that have participated have really been just so appreciative. I got a really nice thank you note in my box tonight from one of the participants. And, you know, just a little note like that can make everything, all the other challenges that sometimes feel a little bit overwhelming, totally worth it. And so I, I see this happening, I see it all coming together and, and I just couldn't be more appreciative. So way to go, community. The second thing that's on my mind is, is attendance. And Vice Chair Campbell, when you had your comments, you were so spot on and I was, I was praying a little bit that I would be called right after you because it was just like the perfect segue and dovetail. But, but we'll bring it back around and I will say that as far as community is concerned, we really do need to continue to come together on behalf of our students. Attendance is where it all begins. And I would say that the state of Georgia has a really solid statute and, and practices in place that really make a difference in terms of support along with enforcement with teeth. And I think that that's exactly the, the direction that we need to keep moving towards. Informally, we have had attendance response committees at different schools and they have been very successful. At some schools, attendance increased 20%. So, so we know that there is merit to having every level be working together to make sure our kids are in school. And just one of the codes from Georgia is student attendance and school climate and that there's a committee that has been established and by the chief judge of the Superior Court of each county, for the purpose of ensuring coordination and cooperation among officials, agencies and programs involved in compulsory attendance issues, to reduce the number of unexcused absent students from school and to increase the percentage of students present to take tests which are required to be administered under the laws of the state and to improve the school climate at each school. So it's not just about being punitive, it is about also improving the school climate so that kids, we all got that email from Oak Crest the other day, you know, above the district average, a transformation school. And, and the kids are doing great, they want to be in school. So that speaks to school climate. So I do have several documents to hand out to the rest of the board members. I would ask that you please digest it. And I think that this is something, Vice Chair Campbell, that definitely merits speaking to our delegation about, our legislative delegation. It always helps to present a model that's working in, in another state. And let's get all of the dots connected on this at every level. We, we all know it's needed. So that was my second thing. My third thing, and again, it ties right into, to, to discipline, it ties into why are kids at school anyway? It ties into how accountable, especially our teachers are. If, if a student is absent 80 days out of the school year, and please keep in mind, because I don't think this can be said enough, there's got to be a sense of urgency. We only have 180 days in the school year. So to wait and not be bold, there's a consequence. And, and I think that now is the time to really begin being very clear, we're not going to discipline our way out of all of our issues. We have got to put things in place to make sure that those issues don't happen in the first place. And cell phones have everything to do with most of our problems. If you look back through the most major discipline infractions, somewhere there is social media attached to it. I said earlier last week that, that our kids need a break. Our kids deserve to have the opportunity to be kids. We are the fiscal stewards of the district. Why would we be spending $3 million on, on robust summer recovery programs if we know that we're going to be shipping in kids that are going to be too distracted to really focus? I keep my cellphone up here in front of me and people kind of had to be trained not to text me during meetings because I, I don't look at my phone. Every once in a while I'll slip. So if Nancy Thrower slips and doesn't have the self-control to always keep the cellphone off to the side, then how can we expect 11-year-olds to be doing that? It just doesn't make any sense. So I think it's high time that we started enforcing what's already in our Code of Student Conduct. And I quote, "Cell phones and similar wireless devices may be in the possession of students on campus but cannot be visible or activated during regular school hours." This means in the classroom, this means in transition, this means at lunch, this means no more staging fights to film them and put them on Instagram. Instagram's not going to take them down. Facebook's not going to take them down. Snapchat's not going to take them down. We have to take them down. I couldn't be more passionate about this, I guess you've noticed. It's time with the community that we are working so hard together to make great things happen, to get to that top 10%. Our kids deserve to be in school, feel safe, not be bullied, not be distracted, learn how to talk to each other again, learn how to be colleagues, cohorts, professional associates, and maybe even best friends. I don't think cellphone has a place in this anymore. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Thoror. Thank you to all of you for your comments on tonight. I want to start by telling Officers Berry and Peoples, thank you for being here tonight as well, for your service and being here at our meetings. I appreciate everything that you're doing. As Vice Chair Campbell mentioned, next week is our Teachers Appreciation Week. We're looking forward to celebrating the hard work that they do all the time, all, every day with our kids. I challenge different organizations, different, different groups of people in our community to support our Teacher Appreciate, Teacher Appreciation Week. My school, my church, my church has Howard Middle School as their partner school. So the teachers at Howard can expect something from Pastor Cummings next week. I don't know what it's going to be, but it'll be something. So we want to show the, show them that we really support them and, and their endeavors. And I, I challenge other churches and, and organizations and, and groups to, to do the same thing and let our teachers know how much we truly appreciate them. We, we, as, as Ms. Campbell said earlier, during the pandemic, folk really saw the value of teachers firsthand when they had to, when the kids were home and they had to, they had to deal with the education part of it and the discipline part and the, the, the support part of all those things. So we say we value them, let's show our appreciation to all of our, our teachers on next week. And it's not just a day, it's a week. So let's celebrate them throughout the week. I do want to give a shout out to a couple, couple people, couple students, Ian Singelman and Alexis Ledford, two students here at MTI who went to the State Skills USA contest and they both placed in, on the state level. Ian was second place and Alexis took third place. So we want to celebrate those kids, the positive things that they have done in, in, in going to the state and representing MTI and representing their, their families as well. But then also I want to, Ms. Thoror, you kind of, you kind of talked about something that, that I kind of, I've had, I guess, a personal pet peeve about it and it'd probably be the cell phones, it'd be the cellphone issues. I, I wholeheartedly agree, there has to be strict rules about cell phones and the use of cell phones in schools. I understand, and, and let me say it this way, they can't be a double standard with cell phones in schools. There can't be one school that allows students to use the schools for, use their phones for doing certain projects and then another school that doesn't. If it's going to be a rule, let's have a standard rule across the district. If we're saying no cell phones, no cellphone. It's in our Code of Conduct. However, there is some disparity even in how it's being doled out and how we're utilizing those, that rule. So I, I concur. But I also understand as a parent, I also understand as a parent, why parents are giving their kids cell phones because of incidents that happened like in Marjory Stoneman, because parents wanted to know. So now they feel like it's a more safety measure. But the truth of the matter is, the truth of the matter is, even if your child has that cellphone and they call you as the parent. even if your child has that cellphone and they call you as the parent, nine times out of 10, you can't get there. And you can't do anything about it. You're at the mercy of those people who we put in place to handle those situations. I can say that as a parent because when the incident happened at Forest a couple of years ago, my son was at school, my son had a cellphone. But the fact of the matter is, I had to go to, and I wasn't on the board then, that was one of the deciding factors to make me run for the board, but I still had to go to First Baptist, just like every other parent. And I guess, so him having a cellphone did not help the situation. So I understand completely where you are with understanding and why we see cell phones usage being utilized in the wrong way where kids are now taking, I saw recently where kids are in the bathroom during school hours and they're filming fights. I saw, I saw where kids actually had boxing gloves in the bathroom during school hours on a fight. And there's another, there's the two combatants, but then there's other kids in the bathroom, and then there's the ones that's filming this. So I completely understand exactly where you are with the cellphone issue. So we do have to tighten up on those things, and we do have to make sure that we're doing, that we're implementing the right things so that our kids can not be distracted. Because, let's face it, these kids are trying to be virtual stars. They're trying to get all the hits and all the likes and all that kind of stuff. And society has changed. Society has really changed where they, I just see some crazy stuff out there. And it's just, it just amazes me. It just amazes me. I thank you guys for the spirited conversation that we've had in the past couple of meetings about the school board meetings and work sessions. Not going to go back into it, but I had it in my notes that we want to be, the goal of our conversation initially was to be more inclusive and to not be exclusive and to give access to more of the community, to the board, to the decisions that the board makes. We say yes, it's on the board doctors out there for the agenda, for people to review and to preview and to critique and to send in suggestions. So I think the conversation is a good conversation. I think it's a healthy conversation. And I think, I know that we'll come to some good conclusion at the end. We may not all agree on the time or the date or the whatever, but I think that we all agree that we want the community to be involved in the board and the board's decisions and how we do policy and how we do governance within our district. Finally, on the 13th, February, April 13th, three of us took a tour. We did a tour. We went out to Marion Correctional Institution. Now, let me say, not just, it was three board members, but there are several other members of our district that went with us. And quite interesting, quite interesting tour. I want to thank Wharton Shannon Varnes of Marion Correctional Institution and the regional director for the prison system, Mr. Brian Riedel, who actually escorted us. Mr. Riedel's wife is a principal in our district at Shady Hill. And so they made sure that they came, took us to attorneys, and we did a very thorough tour of the facility. And I think we learned some things. We learned some things, we saw some things, and we also left with more questions. So I did want to thank them for the opportunity to come out and their entire staff for opening up the gates for us to come in. But I'm more grateful that they opened up the gates for us to get out. So we weren't stuck there. But it was definitely a learning experience. I want to encourage the superintendent and those that did not go and those other administrators in our district that the next time we go, that you please try to attend because there are some, there are some things there that we as a district can see that could surely benefit some of the things that we're trying to do in many different areas, in many different areas as far as closing that pipeline or shutting down that pipeline. I know some folk feel that the pipeline is a figment of our imagination. But when you've got 80,000 people in prison, it's not a figment of our imagination, it's something real. So with that being said, I am looking forward to next week to our teacher appreciation and to being out in the schools and celebrating our teachers. That concludes my, Ms. Thrower.
Just getting back to the cell phones, I think I heard that there's only two items on an upcoming work session agenda? Maybe we could add it?
Let me verify, yes, I had two items. I'm going to go pull it back up for the date of those.
Do we have a consensus of the board to add it on the agenda?
Yes.
From me, I love that idea, but it wasn't my turn to speak. But I believe that we should have good discussion and we could give clear direction where we stand as a board on following that Code of Conduct and those cell phones. So I think that would be great.
And it'll be a heavy lift in the beginning because the kids are not going to be happy and maybe other people aren't going to be happy either, you know? But I think that it'll be worth working through the pain of whatever we put into place. And, you know, there's probably going to be a big old burst of behavior because kids are used to just saying, you know, that's my cellphone. You're not going to touch my cellphone. You're not going to take my cellphone. Well, it says right here in the Code of Student Conduct that it can be confiscated and refuses to allow search of it will be considered gross insubordination. And you're not supposed to be using it for, you know, sexual things and all this stuff that's always in our expulsion packets. It's all happening, so we might as well make it stop happening. I mean, who's the adults in the room here?
Right. Mr. Browning?
Yes. Yeah, I'm happy to talk about this because I think it's, I think it's an important topic. I take a, you'll find this probably difficult to understand that I would be in a standout position. However, I see communications like this as the rest of the society as a very positive safety and educational instrument. If it can be used improperly, certainly, we get on top of that and stay with it. But if you go into society, modern society, without a clear understanding and having learned how to adapt to rules and adapt to information that is at your fingertips, the entire Library of Congress, for example, at your fingertips, actually 100 Library of Congresses at your fingertips. So if we can make this positive rather than to think of the most negative situation and to make it more penal, make it more like a juvenile detention scenario, I come down hard on the educational aspect of this. And if we can just make it so that it is positive, then we're, we've gone somewhere. And it's, it is the way society is going. You cannot blame students for society. Students are entering society, and they must be able to be competent, have the self-discipline, learn. It's like keeping your elbows off the table. You learn how to operate correctly, and you cannot pull out electronic devices like this. We are only at the beginning. So to stop it is like stopping automobiles because they're not the same as a horse and buggy. It's just not going to happen. It's something you can, I suppose, try and do, but you better be able to be on top of the mechanics, following that analogy, the driving, the transportation, the avionics as we move into other areas. It's another world, and you don't do it by shutting it down. That is education. And I, some people look at a child going like this with both thumbs. They can so outperform me that it isn't even close. And as you get into the world, you better be good on that. You better be able to fly with both thumbs. And you better be able to compete with the rest of the world, and they will be able to. You will not shut that down. So I also think that it would impact us in terms of our attendance. I think it would drive students immediately, families immediately, to charter schools, to another, an alternative selection. Because I would not send a child to a, out into the world today without the protection of a cellphone and active, positive use. Now, certain restrictions absolutely apply, but those are on a positive nature, not on a negative nature. The next thing, they'll be outlawing firearms. I'm sorry, I had to just throw in a little joke there. Sorry, Chairman. So that's the, that's my position. It's a very positive component of modern society.
Thanks, sir.
I'm looking very forward to the robust discussion that we will have potentially. I believe you have consensus to add that. I know that I recently saw a school that is having issues with students calling their parents and letting them know that they are sick. And so in order for a student to be removed from a school for an illness, they have to go through the health services assistant, have to go through the health clinic, and the school is basically informing the parent. You can't just come and check your kid out because they're sick. We have, there's processes in place, but kids are bypassing the rules because they have a cellphone in place. I also am aware that we should be one-to-one devices next year. So there will still be means of communication that students will be able to have. It just won't be personal cell phones. I know I have a child myself who, one of my children does not have a cellphone, and my child emails me when he wants to tell me something because he still has a means to communicate, but it's just not a personal cellphone on him that is causing the distraction, the disruption. Having devices assigned to each student will allow them the opportunity for intellectual research and access to the libraries of Congress and so forth that we'll be able to do for the purposes of education. But whenever we're talking about the distractions that cell phones are causing, perhaps if we were to still allow cell phones, perhaps, if we had the ability to shut down the internet on all of those cell phones and it would only be available for texting and phone calls, which I, as a parent, have the ability to do that with my own cellphone carrier, then cutting out the internet would change a lot of things for some of these students because I also was on a school campus this week where I was a part of disrupting students who were on the school campus trying to do a TikTok right there in the middle of the courtyard. And, I mean, that's not what they're supposed to be doing in the middle of the school day. So I assure you that it will be robust discussion. I completely hear what you're saying, Mr. Browning, that technology and cell phones and having all of those resources in the palm of our hand is absolutely where the direction is going. Having it on our wrist is also where the direction of technological advances are going. However, what it is doing to impact our students on a daily basis deserves additional attention and additional discussion that I will be looking forward to as we have in the work session.
Thank you.
Chair Cummings, if I may. And members of the board, I am confirming that I was correct in saying May 5th. I wanted to be sure that there were two topics or there currently are two topics, Board Membership Dues and our Strategic Plan Goal Four. So I hear that it's a pleasure of the board to add topic on use of cell phones. And I just want to make sure that I understand that your request is for us to, as a team, operations team, provide an update of what the current Code of Student Conduct requires and says, any data that we may have pertaining to the use of cell phones and what those consequences might be. Is there anything additional that I might be missing?
I know that in the report that I just received, it has a lot of information about the disciplinary infractions related to cell phones. I don't think that they'll be able to aggregate it all the way to the point to say, the ones that have been videoed, that, you know, the fight that was instigated from a social media, we won't be able to get down into that granular of data. But they do obviously have the disciplinary data of those that we are capturing cell phones that are not supposed to be in use, that are being used. But as we have the discussion, the thing that concerns me the most, and this is the last thing I'll say on it, is that we have 20-plus thousand infractions, and cell phones are such a minor part of that. This is going to be a hard, a hard conversation for us to really say, okay, you need to be focusing on getting that cellphone out of that kid's hand instead of making sure that they're not yelling at their teacher and, you know, all of these other things that students right now are just having unruly behavior. Cellphone's just a minor piece of that.
I just want to add, I know this is getting late, and I've heard a lot of different things. And to some extent, I do agree with Board Member Browning when he talks about cell phones and the way technology and stuff is going. Because I even think there may be some teachers that will tell you that the computers are probably becoming obsolete because they are going to the cell phones, and who knows what it will be next. I would, I'm just curious if there's ways for us to block programs. And I specifically heard like TikTok, Instagram, Snap. But then I know that students are probably clever enough to come up with some other program if we could block those. Or maybe we could have, or maybe the superintendent and her team could come up with what their thoughts and ideas are to help maybe guide. Because there's probably appropriate times, like in a classroom setting, like, you know, if the teacher is playing, you know, quizzes or something. There's probably reasons, and I just want to make sure that we're not going to box, you know, everything in that we're not keeping up and doing right by times either. So I'm just kind of curious for more investigation. Although I do agree with Ms. Thrower, she, there's valid points, and the phones are bad. So how we navigate through that, you know, smart. So I look forward to that.
And I don't want to keep going around on this, but I hear what you guys are saying about being able to block certain things and being able to turn off certain things. But let's face it, let's face the reality of this. These students don't have a cellphone plan. It's their parents' cellphone plan. So it's the parents letting these things be on it. So, I mean, you go to the school and take the phone, and some parent's going to say, that's my phone. You just took my phone from my child that I gave my child. So when we have this conversation, I don't want to keep going on it, but when we have this conversation, let's talk about the whole conversation. Let's talk about the reality of this. Let's talk about how we take phones from kids and go through the phone and even the legality of those types of things because there is a legality attached to all of this. So I'm not going to keep going on it, but when we come back on the 5th, on the work session for the 5th, let's be prepared to have that conversation. Let's really be prepared to have that conversation. And I'm sure we'll get some parental input, some input from the parents as well.
Chair, there is absolute safety involved. There are families that will not allow a child. I would not, I would not allow a child in a modern society to go out without a cellphone. I mean, that, it's a critical component of life and safety.
At what age, Mr. Browning?
Pardon me?
At what age?
You can pick the age, but it's probably...
We have four-year-olds, so at what age?
Let me ask this question, let me ask.
You know, that's in the details. I'm just talking about the details.
It's 8:39. It's 8:39.
Yes.
We just said we're going to have this in the work session. So let's talk about that in the work session.
Perfect.
Please, and let's move forward, okay? All right, so we're at the alternate placements. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received alternate placements list for students through March 30, 2022. Ms. Martinez-Opez, are there any parents who have submitted timely requests on their child's disciplinary matter? May I have a motion to approve expulsion of students JD 22103, JD 22104E, JD 22105, JD 22108, JD 22109, JD 22110E? twenty-two one oh nine, JD twenty-two one one zero E, JD twenty-two one eleven, JD twenty-two one thirteen, with educ, with educational services for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year and the entire twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year? May I have a motion?
Motion.
So moved by Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Poles have the same signs. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Submit.
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Most, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at eight forty PM.